Good afternoon, panel members, just completing a sound check. And once we have all panel members, then we'll get started our afternoon session.
Good afternoon. Due to COVID-19, Committee of Adjustment public hearings are being conducted virtually by electronic means through WebEx webinar, an online digital platform, and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, which is moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. My name is Bruce Mullock, and the panel this afternoon is Carl Nipfel, Larry Clay, Sahir Bayat, and Yim Chan. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone. All participants will automatically be muted on entry. When an item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Today, Committee of Adjustment is offering attendees the option to appear by video. Those attendees who have registered in advance to attend by video will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when their item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allocated speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as an attendee. Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Members of the public and applicants are not allowed to use Share Screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The moderator will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishinaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990, as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning, which apply to property, permission to extend or to alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property in order to create new lots. Anyone in attendance today who wishes to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on a particular application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, your address, and your email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications by email only. You may not agree with the decision of the committee. Decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision. I will call each item in the order that it is listed on the agenda. When an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if requested by the committee. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the application into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the agent or applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I will comment to you when you are approaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please state your name and your address, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters that are outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and may be asked to present to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to the proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised in order to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support of or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker once they have finished their presentation. When all the speakers are finished, the applicant or the agent will have an opportunity to rebut, but only to those issues that were raised by the speakers. And that will mark the end of discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Are there any declarations of interest by panel or staff with respect to the items in this time slot? Seeing none, Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, have you received any requests for deferral?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and panel members. No, not today.
Okay. Are there any files to be closed?
Through you, Mr. Chair, see none for today.
Thank you. So we go to the first number, the first item on the agenda in this time slot, which is number 22, 138 Glen Rose Avenue. And before us, the committee has Plan of Survey, Revised Site Plan, floor plans and elevations. There is presentation material from the agent from November 16. There is staff report from River Forestry, and there is support in the form of 13 form letters signed by owners and occupants on Glen Rose and Inglewood Drive. So we shall ask the agent for this application to join us now by stating your name.
Amanda, you've been unmuted.
Hello, my name is Amanda Levy. I'm the architect for the project, and my address is 79 Balmoral Avenue.
Good afternoon to you. Okay, panel members, on this application, any questions for the applicant? Presentation requested? Mr. Bayat, go ahead. Mr. Bayat, you are on mute.
I was just looking at the presentation material. Are these photographs and not the photographs, but the images of the models incorrectly marked? The one on the left shows a photo of model at front of house, which makes sense as a garage, and the balcony is, third-floor balconies is sort of fitted into the roof. I think it's the next page down.
Correct, that would be on image number two, the second page.
That's right, image number two.
Oh, yes, you're right. The second image should be at the rear of the house. My apologies, yes.
From what I just highlighted, I think it says third-story balcony. I forget which variance number it is. But was that balcony supposed to be at the rear of the house or the front of the house?
No, the balcony is at the front of the house.
At the front, okay. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Panel, other questions? I have a question for you. The, there's a platform that is 21 meters squared where four meters is permitted. Can you tell us, I mean, that is a substantial variance. Can you tell us why that was included in your design, please?
Sure, so that's the, if we look at the photo of the model on the left-hand side of the screen, we can see that the platform is allowing for access to the addition, which is really at the rear of the house. And the reason for the size of the platform is to grate down the mass of the roof line.
Okay, I see that it does, does that, yes, okay. Other questions, panel? Not hearing any? Let's take the application then into committee for a motion. Mr. Bayat, go ahead.
Thank you, I'll step in. Thank you, Chair. This particular rendition actually is quite an interesting one. I'm also quite intrigued by the third story, the push-out at the back, sorry, push-out at the front, and then you've got this interesting balcony at the back. My only concern for the owners would be the snow that might pile up on the balcony, but I think it's a really interesting way of expanding space. I don't see any issues with it personally, and I know there are a couple of, there's a forestry number two condition. Other than that, I don't see any other conditions attached. I'd be quite happy to move a motion if my colleagues don't have any other concerns or issues.
Is there a second to that motion for approval? It is seconded, Mr. Nipfel. Moved and seconded, to approve, subject to forestry. Those in favor, please show hands. The motion is carried by a unanimous vote, and the application is approved. Thank you. On number 23, 490 Oakwood Avenue, the committee has before it application material submitted. There is support in the form of two letters, 488 and 502 Oak Ridge, and there is opposition correspondence from 492 Oakwood, and also a 23 signature petition in opposition, signed by the owners and occupants of a number of addresses on Amherst Avenue and Ashbury Avenue and Oakwood Avenue, totaling 23 in total. So let's have the applicant join us, please.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Could you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Daniel Falsen. I am here on behalf of the owners of 490 Oakwood Avenue.
Very good, good afternoon. Okay, Daniel, you have five minutes to present the thrust of your application to the panel, and please go ahead now.
Sure, through you, Chair. We are seeking relief from nine bylaws, all of which pertain to a proposed two-story addition to the primary dwelling and the construction of a new detached laneway house. The majority of the variances that we are requesting pertain to the primary dwelling, which incorporates a secondary suite within the basement. Regarding the addition to the primary dwelling, three stories are currently permitted through zoning bylaws. We have asked to build slightly higher than permitted in order to allow for standard ceiling heights. We have also asked to maintain the existing side yard offsets to the exterior walls. Additionally, we have requested permission to provide access to the secondary suite from the front yard, which is required for fire safety, and we are also requesting a floor space index of 0.94, whereas 0.8 is permitted. In the absence of coverage bylaws, we believe that the FSI is intended to prevent excessive coverage, and in this case, we're building vertically. The City of Toronto has been undergoing densification in order to alleviate a very significant housing shortage, and we believe that our proposal is in line with their intent. Similar variances have been approved for 502 Oakwood, located six houses to the north, which is a three-story dwelling with a larger FSI and building height. Front yard access to basement suites have also been approved in multiple instances throughout the area, as it's the only way to provide adequate fire service accesses, access to dwellings with narrow or even non-existent side yards. We have conversed with the planning department and did not see any staff objections, recommendations, or conditions to our application. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding our file. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, panel, we do have a speaker standing by to speak in opposition. So shall we go to that speaker? Let's go to the speaker, moderator.
Hi, my name's Sharon Payne. I'm at 492 Oakwood Avenue.
Good afternoon to you.
Good afternoon. For the height of his building, three stories, is going to take a lot of light from my house. The back laneway, two-story dwelling, is going to take sunlight away from my house. I will have no light in my house if this goes through. And parking will be a problem as well if two units are going to be there.
Okay.
And we were thinking of putting solar panels up. We contacted people for this. They told us to put a metal roof because it would be more practical for solar panel, but if he's going to put the three, two additions on top, that's not going to be any good for solar panel.
Because it's going to block the sun on your roof?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Panel members, any questions for this speaker? Mr. Nipfel, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Payne, I didn't get your address. Are you at 488 or 492?
492.
Thank you very much.
So, okay, Sharon, thank you. Any other comments you wish to make?
And to the plans, the two sheds, his shed and ours, it looks like our shed is even with the house, and on the plans, it's kind of set back. And I don't think there's 12 feet between his, his office or shed and our shed. This is, I suffer from anxiety, and I need light.
Okay. So you're, you're telling us that this would be a source of anxiety for you?
Yes, it will.
Yeah. Very good. Okay, we're gonna go back now to the applicant, and the applicant will have an opportunity to respond to what you've said in rebuttal. So let's do that now.
Yes, through you, Chair. I understand that the speaker is, she lives direct to the property directly to the north, 492 Oakwood Avenue. That said, we are permitted to build significantly higher than we are right now. We're, you know, we are, we are asking for the minor increase in height, yes, but, but regardless, we are permitted to place a three-story dwelling here, and I think this is what kind of scares people away, or scares them to begin with. I also want to acknowledge that her dwelling is currently, it's a one-and-a-half-story dwelling, so it is slightly higher than we are right now. But there are, there are no windows, or there shouldn't be any windows, because there currently is no light that can enter her house from the south, just due to the proximity of the dwellings they currently are. That said, a significant portion of her rear yard is currently covered with a garage and looks like a shed as well. So I can't imagine there being too much difference in the light that enters the rear yard. As well, the rear yard is on the west side of the property, and we are building on the south, so with the sun, I mean, her exposure would be towards the end of the day, which by that time, our proposal would not be blocking the sun at all, as we're to the south and even to the west, to the east, sorry. With regards to parking, it's my understanding that the majority of these laneway suites and basement suites, they're intended for people who don't drive and rely on public transportation, so we wouldn't anticipate any additional parking use, whether in the laneway or along the street, especially and certainly if it's not allowed. And really, that's, that's how I see the impact here. Happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Perhaps I'll begin with the questions. Panel members may have others, but this relates to your minor variance, number one, the deficiency in the rear yard soft landscaping. You're proposing 65% where 85% is required, and the site plan we're looking at right now tells the story. The, that area between the house and the ancillary building laneway suite has a shed, and the shed is what is occupying a bunch of soft landscaping ground and triggering that variance, so that is a concern to me. It looks like the site is overbuilt here. You've got three structures, and, and the result is a deficiency in soft landscaping in the rear. Soft landscaping has become a very, very important issue that we consider and focus on because of the need for properties to manage their own stormwater. So I'd be interested in your comment on, on why you need to have a shed in that space.
Well, the shed off the bat, the shed is, is basically, it's due to the size, it's not technically a legal structure by Toronto's, you know, how Toronto sees it. It's not even a structure that requires a building permit. So it's, it does take space, however, I wouldn't consider it a permanent structure because it isn't. That's how I see it. And then with regards to, for example, managing drainage, there is, a lot of these properties are overbuilt. If you look to the property, at the property to the south, you know, they, they're basically starting at zero line at the front, and it's very, very common in this area. We could possibly look into removing the shed, however, it is, it is just a relatively small structure.
But it's occupying a significant chunk of the space in the rear yard, probably just about equivalent to your deficiency. Am I right or wrong?
No, no, without the shed, we are still, we are still over. We can, how about, how about if we were to look into permeable pavers in the rear yard, or, pavers would probably do it in order to facilitate drainage. It would, it would, it would make it better than it currently is, but I can't imagine removing the shed making it that much better.
Panel members, other questions? Mr. Bayat, go ahead, then Mr. Nipfel. Mr. Bayat, unmuted.
Thank you. I think I'd just like to continue your train of question, because I think that is an issue. Asking for such a large change in soft landscaping, it does become a problem. When you have an opportunity, as the applicant has just mentioned, that this structure isn't, if I'm not mistaken, I thought I heard him say it's not legal. If it's not legal, why is it there?
No, no, it's not that it's not legal. It's due to the size, the square footage, it's under 100 square foot, so it doesn't require a building permit.
It doesn't require, okay.
That's correct.
Your laneway suite, if I'm not mistaken, the drawings indicate a basement of the laneway suite?
No, no, there's a basement suite within the dwelling, and then there's this separate laneway suite, which is on, coming off, backing off of the laneway.
But within the laneway suite that's indicated, does it have a basement to it?
No, no, that's just a single, single.
There's a garage and then the suite above.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, it's two stories, which means that in your garage space, you probably have reasonable amount of space. Would it not be reasonable to say this, that you might willingly remove the shed, increase the soft landscaping, so that it actually makes your property safer in the sense of water permeability?
I'm not entirely certain. Yes, there's, it is, it is a possibility, however, again, I want to just exemplify just the fact that it is a small structure. And, and if we were to remove it from the site plan and then, you know, build the project and then go to Rona and take a vinyl shed and place it down, we'd be in the same situation that we are right now. I do believe permeable pavers would solve the issue here, if there is even a drainage issue, because a lot of the main dwelling runoff would be running towards the street as designed and as allowed. We can explore the.
Okay, we have two more questions for you, so let's go on to Mr. Nipfel first, then Ms. Chan second.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Could you explain to me, I don't understand what you're proposing with permeable pavers and how that's going to deal with your soft landscaping. and how that's going to deal with your soft landscaping. Where are you proposing to put permeable pavers?
Uh, we're, we propose to, well, permeable pavers with a, with a cash basin, obviously, uh, in the rear yard to manage or to store the runoff. Um, any runoff that's entering the rear yard.
But the backyard currently is covered with soft landscaping, there's a walkway and there's a shed. So are you proposing to put permeable pavers in instead of the soft landscaping? I mean, where are you gonna put, where are you gonna put them?
The walkway, uh, I mean, the intent of permeable pavers is to store water. Uh, it's, it's not necessarily, doesn't necessarily have to be infiltrated into the ground, right? They could be, you could have a larger reservoir. Um, we can, we can do something like that.
So your suggestion is permeable pavers on the walkway?
Sure.
Okay, um, my second question has to do with the, the site plan indicates there's a new deck, but then there's a note that says that it's proposed hard landscaping, that, which is it?
Uh, it should be, it should be pointing to the, it's meant for the walkway.
Yeah, pointing to, to where the deck is.
Correct, that's, was drawn incorrectly.
Now, are your second and third floors built on the existing first floor?
Yes.
So, this, the, the concern I have is with your, um, I think it's your second or your third floor, um, balcony, third floor balcony. It runs all the way across the back and halfway down the side on the south side. What is on the north face of the building at 488? Are the, are there windows there?
Let's, let's put up the north elevation, please.
No, no, of, of building number 488, he doesn't have that, Mr. Chairman.
Forty-
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to determine, if you could, if you could put up the third floor plan. I'm, I'm just trying to determine the degree of, of, um, privacy problem that that third floor balcony creates. It's a very unusual balcony. It runs all the way around, there it is. It's on the right-hand side, it runs across the back and halfway down the side. Why, why is it so big?
Hang on, are we seeing this the right way? Oh, well, uh, this can, basically, it was just, it was designed as a balcony just because of the flat roof. We don't have a problem with closing this off or having this, you know, just facing the, the, uh, the, uh, front, I believe that's, sorry, the rear.
But, yeah.
Yeah, the rear.
I just think it's a privacy issue with the people next door, that's the reason I'm raising it. So you would be able to removing the balcony on the north face of the building?
Definitely, yes. That would be the south, south face, wouldn't it? Uh, 488.
Yeah, I think it is, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the last issue is, do you have any idea if you remove the, um, shed and, and if it was replaced with grass, for instance? What percentage of soft landscaping you'd have?
Um, well, we can see conservatively that it's 10 square meters. Oh, yeah, conservatively, uh, just give me a second here. We'd be, we'd be closer, we'd be pretty much at the minimum, just under the minimum.
Under 85?
Correct.
If it was 10 square meters, it would be-
Sorry, 10 square, 10, sorry, 100 square feet is 10 square meters, yes.
So you wouldn't need variance number one, then?
More or less.
Well, it's kind of important to us, so if, if that's what you're proposing, um, and that's what your calculations come up with, we would, we wouldn't need variance number one.
How about if we were to put a green roof on the shed?
We're not, we're not here to negotiate details like this with you. No, no, we were talking about the shed, you can hear it from every one of the panel members, it's a concern about the shed.
I think the issue is-
But the engineering-
I think the issue is that the amount of soft landscaping in the rear yard is just not acceptable. I, I, I'd be very surprised if my colleagues are going to vote for variance number one. If you could re, if you could remove the shed, which is an easy do, um, and replace it with soft landscaping, and then that meant the removal of variance number one, your application is beginning to look considerably more agreeable.
You can, you can hear the concern on the part of every member in this panel almost. But Ms. Chan still has a question for you, let's see what it is.
Can I ask now?
Go, go ahead.
Okay, um, in your presentation material or submitted material, there are two photographs. Uh, is, is, um, uh, can the staff please bring them up? I think it's on page of 60 and 61. I just want to know, uh, these pictures of the existing backyard, it seems that there's a roof uh, between the shed, is that the shed and the main house? And, and I'm not too sure if you keep that, how is the soft landscaping going to grow? Uh, it seems that everything is careful.
Wait, this, this is not our shed, uh, just to be clear, this is, this belongs to the, this belongs to, uh, the owner to the north, the, the lady who is, who was on the call earlier. Uh, our shed is the black structure, uh, that is just to the south.
Oh, it, the, the, the tall one is your, your shed?
Yes.
So it is a two-story shed?
Uh, I don't believe it's two-story.
How tall is it?
It looks like it's quite high.
I couldn't tell you how tall it is.
It looks two-story.
And I also like to mention that you said that anything under, uh, any ancillary building under 100 square feet does not require a building permit?
Correct.
Uh, on, on your site plan, that dimensions, a label, your, is exceeding the 100, it's actually 108 square?
Uh, and actually, that, that number has been recently bumped up, I believe it's closer to 160 square feet now. Regardless, regardless, that, that structure would not require a permit.
Oh, 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 we, I, I was, it's just new to me. Um, okay, but I, in my opinion, despite of that, uh, I agree with most of my colleagues, uh, what they think about the shed. It's only that you have made a proposal, uh, to increase the, the number of units. You have a nice laneway suite. And I thought that it's some kind of give and take, right? So the, although-
I understand, it's, it's just that the owner-
I'm sorry. Uh, because the size of the backyard, your shed is not too small. It's not small, it's actually big.
Well, the owner has spent quite a significant amount of money on that shed. And, I mean, for, for the neighbor to the north who is complaining about the sun, uh, you can see her entire rear yard is basically covered.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. I mean, at this stage, I think we've considered this enough. I think it's time, unless there are important further questions, let's take this one into-
Well, we can defer this, can we?
Excuse me. Let's take this into committee for a decision, okay? So we're really gonna go into committee now on this.
Uh, sorry, uh, so I want to continue what I observed. He said that the shed is the two-story structure. And this is making, making the whole thing very confusing.
I think he said it was a one-story structure.
He didn't say two-story, he didn't say two-story, but you can see it's probably between 12 and 14 feet tall. It's something like-
Yeah, yes, okay, yeah, two-story high.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so it's, it's tall. It's a significant structure because of its height. Mr. Niffl, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, um, I think that the, the amount of soft landscaping provided in the rear yard is unacceptable. Uh, and I would be unable to support that at 65%. If removing the shed means that variance number one can be removed, then I think that the application is, is considerably more reasonable. The other issue that I have difficulty with is that third floor balcony. I don't see any reason for it to extend onto the south side of the building. As the applicant has indicated, uh, he'd be prepared to have the balcony limit, um, only on the, on the rear of the building.
Yes.
Uh, I, I'd be prepared to support it with those two changes, although if the applicant would prefer a deferral to reconsider some other aspects of it, I'm happy with that as well. It just, I, I certainly can't support it in its current state.
Let me ask you this Carl, about, you know, your concern about minor variance number one. Why don't we just refuse minor variance number one? And that would, in itself, would it not require, the, the simplest way to get around that for the applicant would be to remove the shed?
I think so, but I'm, I'm, I'm guessing based on the answers that you were getting from the applicant, I suspect his suggestion of a deferral is so that he can consult with his client.
Okay, Mr. Clay, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, I, I think we, we ended with the applicant, uh, suggesting that instead of, uh, making adjustments to his variance, that he would prefer to have a deferral. So as much as we hate doing that, especially when we spend this amount of time on it, um, it, it might be in his client's best interest to, to come back, uh, perhaps with not seeking a variance for the rear yard landscaping. I mean, I, the laneway suite is almost as of right. Uh, I went Carl, the, the actual building and development seems reasonable. I appreciate the next-door neighbor's concerns, but, um, there are a number of three stories in that area and I think we have to expect that that's gonna continue. So I think maybe the best course of action would be to, uh, allow, unless he's, unless he's prepared, maybe we need to ask him whether he's prepared to accept it without, without approving variance number one.
I think we've spent enough time on this application. I'd be prepared, if you want to make a motion with respect to deferral, let's see where that goes.
Sure, I'll move deferral.
That is seconded by Mr. Niffl. So moved and seconded to defer to allow the applicant to reconsider the details of the application. Those in favor, please show of hands. That votes unanimous. The application is thereby, uh, deferred as the motion is carried. Thank you. And we move along to number 24. 16 Essex Street. On this application, panel has before it, submitted materials including a revised site plan. We have a 2021 committee decision. There's an arborist report. There's correspondence from the agent September. There is an application to injure or remove trees, September. And there is a staff report from Urban Forestry from November. So let's have the applicant join us on 24.
Hello, can you hear me?
We do hear you.
Hi, my name's Alberto Ferreira, Mr. Chair and committee members. Hello.
Hello to you, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, panel members, um, no one is registered to speak on this, uh, application except the, the agent. Any questions for the agent? If there are none, Mr. Niffl, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is a question to the applicant. There's an enclosure around the swimming pool, uh, based on the information that we've got before us. Uh, it looks as, I'm gathering that it's a plastic, um, structure. But is it permanent? Is, is the idea that the swimming pool is completely enclosed all year round?
Um, it's, it's for, for winter purposes. The reason that my client purchased this pool in the first place was that she had a, a really bad car accident and, uh, she has to go through regular physiotherapy and then, and these types of things. And she can't walk very well. She spends, uh, six months of the year in Columbia where she's from just because the weather allows her to, so, you know, to be okay. Um, she has a lot of issues with her joints and bones because of the accident. So she, it was, it was asked that she put in some form of water exercise area, and she did. She had a company come in and crane this because, um, if you're familiar with the area, just on the corner there by, uh, uh, I think it's called Fiesta Farms there off of Christie. Um, there's a small laneway that you get in there. We had to get a crane and bring this pool in. So the company who brought the pool in, um, put a slab on grade down and then just set the pool on it. But the pool was almost six feet tall off the ground. So my client, uh, she, she says, well, my name's Albert. She says, Albert, please, I need this pool at ground level because I can't get into it, you know? Um, so that's the reason why the pool is now going to be set at grade level where you can walk into the pool, down into the pool, and there's a, um, a treadmill in there where she can run in water. Uh, it's a small pool, as you can see from the measurements. Um, it's got its own mechanical cover with a lock, uh, so you can, you can literally walk on top of it. Uh, however, she wants to be able to exercise, uh, her joints in the winter season because, you know, she's here, uh, sometimes. And, uh, so she's purchased, um, an enclosure from a company called Covers and Play. It's, it's a polycarbon enclosure, which is, so this would be the north side where the garage is. And it, it'll be fixed on the north side, but there's two sliding sections that will slide back underneath each other. Um, and so you can enjoy the sunshine when the days are good. But you can close it up so that, uh, you can be in there and, uh, use it even if it's snowing. Um, it's completely transparent, which is great. Um, that, that answers your question, that's, that's where we're at.
When it's enclosed, when the, when the cover is on it, is the outside of the cover, the outside, there, there's, there's two rectangles drawn around the swimming pool. Does it extend beyond the outside perimeter of that, that space that's shown as a swimming pool?
Yeah, so where you see the 10 foot 11 inches?
Where is that, sorry?
At the rear of the pool, between the garage and the pool.
Yeah.
Uh, where it shows 10 foot 11, that's the exterior of the, uh, concrete wall, which, uh, it's a grade beam, which then the, um, structure will sit on. The structure actually sits three inches inwards of that exterior measurement.
And, and it can be moved back and forth?
It slides from where the house is, where it says one-story unheated enclosed deck. From that direction, it slides towards the garage. There's three panels. So if you divided that 24 foot and change by three, each panel is approximately that size. And two of the panels slide underneath the one at the end, which is then fixed.
And that, and the, did the, the people in zoning clarify that this element isn't considered a building? Is that correct?
Yes, they did, yes, they did.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
And I, sorry, I, they did because the question was posed to me, is this a permanent structure? And we said, no, it's not, and so did the actual company who, who makes this.
Okay, thank you. All right then, I think at that stage, then there are no further questions. Let's take the application into committee for a motion. Mr. Byatt, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, and we, we only have this one, um, variance in, at, at our, uh, in front of us for, for consideration. Uh, and I think the explanations that were provided were quite interesting. Um, the pool is definitely not one of those gigantic ones, this is a four-foot depth. Um, and, uh, as the agent has explained, his, his client thinks using it, uh, more in the interests of her health. So I don't see any, any, uh, other concerns with this particular application. The only condition that I see is forestry number two. Outside of that, there aren't any, so I'm quite willing to, uh, move approval.
Thank you. Ms. Chan, are you seconding that? Yes, it is seconded, okay. Moved and seconded to approve, subject to forestry. Those in favor, please show hands. And that's a unanimous vote. Motion carried, application is approved. Number 25 is 838 Carla Avenue. On this application, we have plan of survey, revised site plan, photographs of the front and trees on site, cover letter from the agent, 16 November, correspondence from, uh, city planning, and correspondence in support from 842 Carla. So let's have the agent join us, please state your name.
David, you've been unmuted. Sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we do.
Oh, sorry, okay, uh, yes, good afternoon, it's David Lying, I'm the agent for the application, 2100 Blue Street West. 2100 Blue Street West.
Good afternoon to you. Okay. Panel members, presentation on this, would you like to ask questions? Mr. Clay, question?
Yeah, I think I just wanted to, I was just looking at the site plan. It doesn't look like there's a whole lot of opportunity for increasing the rear yard landscaping, soft landscaping, but can we just explore that a little bit? Is there, I mean, you're only a little bit over half of what's required, in part because your structure is rather large. Is there anything you can think of or you might be able to do to increase the amount of soft landscaping back there?
So we worked on it a fair amount with different groups, the zoning examiners and the planners, specifically the planner. They, one of the challenges was that we needed to maintain a driving aisle. So you can see there, the planner asked us to hatch off an area which they wanted to be included. And all that was really left because of the stair, the building and the driving aisle has been proposed as being the soft landscaping. So I think I'm answering your question, but I think we've maxed out as much as we can in the available area that's left. Unless you had a recommendation, it wasn't, the problem is the driveway that leads up between the two buildings.
Well, if you've heard many of our discussions, we often suggest or recommend permeable pavers where there is hardscape, because while it doesn't actually technically be classified as soft, it does allow rainwater to percolate through. So is there any opportunity to replace some of that hardscape with permeable pavers?
Originally, I had proposed to the zoning examiner, the owner actually wanted to put down pea gravel, which was very permeable, mostly as an architectural finish. They said it wouldn't classify technically as soft landscaping. So while it would certainly help with that permeability, we could certainly eliminate the asphalt part. The owner has no problem with that.
Yeah, I think gravel or pea gravel serves the same purpose. So if you're prepared to do that, I think that would help us a little bit.
Yeah, no, that's not a problem. They can, the asphalt that's there can be replaced with something that's more friendly.
Great, thanks.
That condition is actually being suggested or imposed by the community planning. There's an email in the, I mean, yeah, it's on page one.
The only thing that the community planning, sorry to interrupt, but to save time, the community planning recommendation, if you refer to the drawings on the screen, only applies to the hatch section. I think what Larry was negotiating is that it also might apply to the portion of the driveway that's beside the hatch section.
Yes, that's, I'm thinking, in that case, we should sort of describe the extent of the new, I mean, permeable pavement, right?
Yeah, so, Mr. Lang, is that doable?
That's fine. My only concern, I don't think this is an issue, is that a portion of that is the right of way. So we wouldn't be proposing structure in there, but I'm quite certain that we can just replace what's there.
That would be good. So if we specify, I don't know if the planning condition satisfies that or whether we need to be a little bit more specific?
I guess it would just, the condition would just be expanded for not just the area identified by the planning department, but the balance of the asphalt driveway area that's behind the main wall there that's in the designated rear yard area. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I think we can do something along those lines. Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Okay, then let's take it into committee and see what we can do to go forward.
A suggestion, Mr. Chairman, through you to Larry, would it make sense to refer to the place, the area that you're changing as the 14 foot 6 inch portion of the existing driveway leading to the parking spot? The light, because that's the piece that's parallel to the hatch area that planning is recommending.
I'm fine with that, Carl. I'm just struggling. What did you say, the 14?
If you look at the area that's soft landscape, that's 14 foot 6 inches. And basically, planning extended that over to the hatch area. And your recommendation, and I agree with it, is to extend it further onto the driveway. So just so that you can describe it in the decision, you might say that the 14 foot 6 inch section of the rear driveway, of the driveway is to be soft, or is to be interlocked or permeable pavers similar to proposed in the planning report?
Yeah, I'm fine with gravel or pea gravel if that's what the owner is interested in doing. I think it serves the same purpose. Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay, then, who would like to go ahead with the motion?
Jim, do it.
Okay, except for the description of the pave area, I'm not too sure how the wording, exact wording of that. Maybe the staff can help us on that. Other than that, I would like to move for approval. So we just, we will just abandon the community planning recommendation, right?
I think we add to it, yeah.
Okay, and if, Larry, if you were going to add pea gravel, then you've got pea gravel, then you've got permeable paving, and then you've got grass. That doesn't seem to make any sense. So if you were to retain the planning department recommendation, I would recommend that what you do is just extend the permeable paving across the driveway.
Fair enough, Carl. Somehow I got hooked, I got latched onto the pea gravel thing, and I.
I like the pea gravel too, but then planning specifically asks for inner, or for permeable paving, so.
I think that's more appropriate anyways, regardless. So yeah, let's do permeable pavers right across.
Yes, yeah, to the whole width of the driveway.
Okay, I think that's great. I'd second that.
Okay, that is seconded. Okay. Let's just check if staff is good with that. They have captured our intent. So motion is seconded. All those in favor, please show of hands. And that's a unanimous vote to carry the motion. The application is so approved. Number 26 is 38 Dewhurst. Here we have submitted materials, a revised site plan, five photographs of the property, two photographs of trees, cover letter from the agent, November 14, comment from city planning, and 11 form letters in support from addresses on Dewhurst and Langford. So, agent, please join us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is John Cummings, agent and architect for the homeowners. My address is 320 Tweedsmere Avenue, Unit 1806.
Good afternoon to you. Okay. Panel members. On this one, I had actually thought I might like a presentation just to get the intent. So I'm going to request a presentation on this one. And as you're presenting, applicant, I mean, the question that came to me reviewing your application was, why not build a two-story structure with compliant coverage? That's where I was puzzled, but go ahead and let's hear your presentation.
Okay, could we go to the cover letter? And just zoom in on the front page, and then we'll go from there. The application is a, is just to replace the one-story garage, which is in a state of disrepair. And in doing so, the homeowners would like to add a small home occupant office. They are a professional couple who sometimes work from home, and it is a space just for one of them to take video calls and work occasionally from home, though they have an office to go into. So that is the general thrust of the presentation. We go to page two. There are six variances identified in the project, although there were seven items in the planning notice. Variance one, item two in the zoning bylaw notice, was for rear yard setback. The current setback that we were, we are looking to match the current setback, which is the same as all of the other properties on the lane. And so we just want to maintain that. The current laneway width is 6.1 meters. We understand that lane widening, the interest in lane widening is to upgrade lanes for two-way drives, but it's already a wide laneway. The second variance, number two, is for side yard setback. And so there, the goal is just to build to the zero lot line and tilt the walls up in place, which would be normally allowed in a, if this were a laneway suite. If we go to the next page. Variance number three is on height, which is maximum height of four meters. We are four meters to the peak of the shed roof. And then there's a small amount that we project over that just for the curb-mounted skylight. If we go to the next page. Variance number four is for lot coverage for ancillary structures. And this one, the current garage is being replaced already, it is over that. If we could scroll down a little bit in this variance, you can see the two on screen side by side here. And so it is, it was identified in the zoning notice as a 20%, 21% coverage. That is including a canopy structure, and it would be 18% without that. If we go to the next page. The next variance is for soft landscaping, where it is required 50% for the rear yard. Now that includes the proposed garage and the existing garage. So on this one, we initially applied at 28%. And after some dialogue with community planning about increasing that number, we are up to 32% currently. And for the paving paths that are being replaced here, we are going to do permeable pavers.
I'm going to stop you just for a moment. You interrupted. You're up to 32%.
Yes.
I don't think, I'm not aware of that. I'm still showing the variance that I think you're referring to as 28.
Yes, so after consultation with community planning, we changed, we removed a little bit of the permeable pavers and replaced it with soft landscaping.
So officially now that you're proposing 32%?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Okay. And then the next page, if we could go to that, is the last variance, number six, which is for the home occupation office. And so this is not strictly permitted within an ancillary building or a structure. However, our argument is that, you know, were we to build a laneway suite on this site, which would be allowed as of right, you could have a home office in there, which would be the equivalent of a den. And so our argument is that it's for the intended use is for the current homeowners to use as a home office, and that's what we would like to build.
Okay, thank you very much. Panel members, questions for the applicant? Okay, my question still is similar to what I said to you before, your variance number four. 21% coverage where 10 is permitted. Why not stay roughly compliant and build a two-story structure with your home office on the second story?
A two-story structure, we believe, would put us over the height limit.
Okay, do you think so?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'm still concerned about that, that coverage. It's very substantial. Any other questions, panel? Hearing none. Let's take the application into committee. Mr. Nipfel, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a delightful little building, very well designed. And to the applicant, thank you. The presentation drawings were also very, very easy to read and very clear. I have absolutely no difficulty with this application at all. I have one question, but I don't know that anybody can answer it. And that is, does anybody know what the objective was of variance number six? I don't know why the city was concerned with home occupation not occurring or occurring other than in the general bill, in the other, the other building, the larger home. I don't see a difficulty in what this applicant is proposing. He's quite right. He could have a home occupation in a laneway suite. And as I think we've all found out during COVID, there are many opportunities where having a separate space to do work is a desirable thing from a health perspective. Unless my colleagues have any other concerns, I'd like to move approval subject to the planning condition, which I believe is to tie any approval that we might give to plans.
Just a second, Mr. Nipfel. I think we do need to alter one of the variances officially.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were, we'd already done that. It's to 32%.
It's 32, so it's an amended application. Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
You need the new area too, right?
Yeah, the area, yep.
It needs a new area, you're correct. So we'll go back to the applicant for that. So applicant, on the variance where you've gone from 28 to 32%, could you calculate, please, what that represents in square meters?
Sorry, the 32%?
The 32%, which, yes.
Yes, it is, I'm sorry, just bear with me one second.
Take a minute.
While we're waiting, I just echo what Carl said. I am surprised we're not seeing more of these applications where people are looking for office space in ancillary buildings. I'm pretty sure it's happening all over the city, whether people are applying for it or not. It's a very convenient solution, you know, coming out of the pandemic. And I think now that more people are in hybrid modes are looking for these kinds of solutions.
Yeah, can I also add a little bit to Kyle's comment? I think it is, the home occupation bylaw is different from the intent of the laneway house. The laneway house is totally because to encourage residential units. So it's outside of the bylaw anyway. So I agree. I think this project is actually very, very well done. And the space that they're asking for is just very, very small. But I think that with the landscaping, given the photographs, actually is a very pleasant, nice green backyard, and I would love to work there too, myself.
Thank you.
Are you waiting for an invite?
I would like to work there too.
That's three of us. Maybe you put it up for rent.
Okay, let's go back to variance number five. Could you give us, do you have a figure now?
The answer is actually 32 meters. In addition to 32%, it was 100 square meter.
32 meters even.
Yep.
Okay, 32% and 32 meters, okay. Squared. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Nipfel, I interrupted your making a motion.
My motion was, I thought we'd already taken care of that, so my apologies, Mr. Chairman. I'm recommending approval of the amended application with 32% and 32 square meters as the new figures for variance number five and the planning condition, which ties the approval to plans.
Thank you very much. Ms. Chan, you're seconding? Ms. Chan is seconding. So it's moved and seconded to so approve the amended application. All those in favor, please show of hands. That's a unanimous vote. So the motion is carried, and the amended application is thereby approved. Thank you. And we move along to number 27. 27 is 464 Main Street. Here we have the submitted package, a revised site plan, revised zoning notice, November 10, 12 photographs of trees, cover letter from the agent, presentation materials from the agent, both November. There are three form letters in support from addresses on Main and Chisholm. And there is in opposition, one piece of correspondence from 205 Chisholm Avenue, Jason Kowalenko. So let's have the applicant join us. Please state your name.
Good afternoon, committee and chair. My name is Brian Abbey, AdTech Building Consultants, and I am the agent for the owners at 464 Main Street.
Good afternoon to you. Okay. Panel members, any requests for a presentation here? Any questions for the applicant? Applicant, is there anything you'd like us to know about your application? Oh, Mr. Niffle?
Just obviously, my covering letter was to, just to qualify that I had made some amendments to the drawings, having consulted with the planning department. They asked if I could reduce or eliminate the soft landscaping variances with a bit of reducing the size of the terrace at the back of the garage, the garden suite. I was able to eliminate variances two and seven. And then the other change was my.
Just one second, okay. Are you, are two and seven then already, do we need to do those officially now?
I, you said, I think I heard you say that you've got a revised zoning notice?
Yes, I want to make sure that that's what we're voting on. So.
How many variances?
We're showing variance two as 41% soft landscaping where 50 is required. Is that, is that gone now?
Yes, yes.
It is. Okay, so two, we have to amend this application then by eliminating number two and seven.
Yes, because it, it applies to the main house as well, yeah.
Okay, so two and seven are both eliminated, and that's, we have an amended application. It's important we caught that. Okay, good.
And the other change was that my clients, to get support from the neighbor at 466, she had a concern about the dormers on the north side casting shadow on, on her property. So it was quite easy for me to just mirror the whole of the third floor so that the dormers were on the south side. And in addition, it would have been flagged by the building department anyway because the, the dormers were too close to the property line, and they would have been flagged as being unprotected openings within the limiting distance.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clay?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Thanks, Chair. The garden suite, so this is, the ancillary building's already there. You're simply just putting a second story on the, on the ancillary building. Is that correct?
Correct, Larry. Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Okay, that's great. And yeah, we have, we haven't seen a whole lot of garden suites come through yet, so this is a good one. It's almost as of right, so good for you. The other thing, the, the decks on the rear, front yard balconies, so are those just Juliet's?
Yes, basically, they're, you know, what they call them, screen balconies.
Yeah, I didn't see any projection. That's why I just wanted to confirm that there, the drawings I was looking at were, were accurate. It just.
Yes, they're within the roof space, basically, yeah.
Yes, that's what it looked like. Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Niffle?
I just want to clarify, they're, they're not Juliet balconies in that they're, you can walk out on them. There's balconies there.
Yes, you can walk out on them.
But am I correct that the roof form extends on either side, therefore providing some protection from privacy concerns?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Very good. If there are no further questions, we can take this application into committee and go for a motion. Mr. Clay, go ahead.
Sure, I'm happy to move this one, Chair. I, I think this is an appropriate expansion development on the property. I, I like that the architect has, has swapped around the dormers to accommodate the next door neighbor. That's very generous of them. Removing the soft landscaping variances also makes it a little bit more palatable. I, it's good to see a garden suite come forward, which, you know, for the most part fits within the requirements of the new bylaw. So I, I don't think this will be a negative impact on the neighborhood. I think quite conversely, it'll be positive one. So I, I'm happy to move approval of the amended application, which would eliminate variances two and seven. And there are no other conditions.
Thank you. Mr. Byatt, you're seconding?
Yes, I am.
Second, okay. Moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, please show of hands. And that is a unanimous vote. To carry the motion, the application is thereby approved. 1694 Dundas Street East. Before us, we have submitted materials, cover letter from the agent, September 6, and also from the agent and the Toronto, Toronto official plan map, received September the 6th. So let's have the agent join us, please. State your name.
Gary Egberts with Egberts Engineering. And I have, if there are further questions, a staff member, Steven Soroka, that will join in if necessary.
Very good, okay. Panel members, are there questions for this speaker? I'm not hearing any, I'm not seeing any. And there's no request for a presentation. Agent, is there anything that we, you'd like us to know about your application that, that we should be advised of?
Would just say that it's not a development proposal. The homeowner had gotten a permit to do a secondary suite, and upon construction starting, we found out that there were a number of improper elements in the building, including the fact that the rear was never constructed with a permit, without foundations, without environmental separation, removals had occurred in the house without a permit. And upon submitting a, a report to the building department on the condition of the building, there was an order to comply issue to make the building safe. The decision was made to demolish the improper construction, and this application has then resulted in proposing a two-story replacement for it, which then resulted in some increased lot coverage, which we found was consistent with other applications in the neighborhood.
Okay, that makes sense.
This will be the family home for this couple that we're representing.
Very good, okay. I think we can now take this application into committee for a motion, please. Mr. Niffle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that this application is, is clearly an improvement over existing conditions. A, a poorly constructed, single-story addition is going to be replaced, basically the same footprint with two stories. I can't see that that's going to create any negative impacts to the neighbors. The one property extends halfway back, the distance of the addition. And the other one, it, it doesn't extend back that far, but I don't see that the addition is going to be posing any problems for them as well. So, and there's only one variance. It's relatively minor. So I'd like to move approval without condition.
Thank you. Second is Ms. Chan. Moved and seconded. Approval. Those in favor. Unanimous vote. The motion is carried. Pardon me. Motion is carried and the application thereby is approved. So thank you. The panel now moves on to number 29, 220 Gled Hill. And on this application, we are simply dealing with the actual submitted materials plus 12 photographs of comparable builds. Let's have the agent join us, please.
Hi, this is Leah Bulger of Renew Architect. I'm the architect and agent for the owner.
Good afternoon to you. Okay.
Good afternoon.
Going to see if the panel members have any questions for you. I'm not hearing any. In that case, any one thing that we should know about your application, applicant?
Um, I, yeah, I'd just like to say that the reason that, well, the first variance came up, which is the side yard setback, is just that we are trying to do a overcladding, overinsulation of some of the existing building, which is intended to be carried on later on. So the second floor addition should be meeting the bylaw by conforming to the ground floor. But because of the overcladding, there's that just minor difference. So it's a, it's a little strange glitch in the bylaw. Whereas if we had overcladded the ground floor first and then did the second story addition, it wouldn't have been a variance. And then the, the other variances are just sort of minor based on the existing conditions, proximity to the property line for roof overhang and, and the height of the existing ground floor, meaning we're just pushing up a little, a little bit higher than the maximum height, which is common in this area, as illustrated by the photographs that we put in.
Okay, I think it's pretty clear what you're, what you're wanting to do and needing to do. Okay, then, fine. Let's take it into committee for a motion, please. Mr. Byatt?
Thank you, Chair. I, I just wanted to say thank you to the applicant as well for explaining the overcladding and improvement in terms of insulation that will happen. I learned something new. This, this application is very straightforward. I think it's a great way to expand space, just go straight up. There are no conditions attached to this particular application, so I move to approve.
Thank you. That is seconded by Ms. Chan. Moved and seconded, approval. Those in favor, please show hands. And that vote, again unanimous, the application is approved. Number 30. 484 Arlington. We're looking at applicant materials as submitted, and we have opposition in the form of correspondence from Ruth Borson at 277 Winnett. So let's have the agent join us, please. Go ahead and do that, please, please.
Martin Rendell, you've been unmuted.
Yes, can you hear me?
Now we hear you fine. Yes, you're with us now. State your name, please.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Yes, it's Martin Rendell on behalf of the owner.
Thank you very much. Okay, panel members, we have the agent with us. And do you have questions for the agent? Mr. Niffle?
Martin, the, the, the opposition at 277 Winnett had indicated that some of the variances are completed and therefore that, that the, the work is finished. Is, can you speak to that?
Sure. The, the applicant started construction under a permit and during construction requested some revisions to the additions, which triggered the variances before you today. So construction has commenced on this, however, what's, what's before you today is our, I'll say, new variances related to a greater construction program than was originally proposed under the permit.
Thanks very much. That clarifies the issue. Thanks.
So, so just on that, so your revised work, you're just pushing it a little deeper? Is that, is that the plan?
Yeah, the, you, I should see. Yeah, on the site plan, it's, it's a larger addition than the, the original permit, and which triggers the setback variances and the length variance. I'm, I'm sorry, some of that's breaking up. I, I think the question was if construction is ongoing today. My understanding is it is not ongoing. It's, it stalled at the moment.
Are there any further questions, panel? I'm not hearing any, so let's take the application into committee for any discussion or moving to a motion, please. Ms. Chan, go ahead.
About this one, I, I think, yeah, they have applied for a permit, but then they want to build a little longer. And then I think that's like, as I say, trigger this application. But given that they give, asking for three variances and the their front yard setback is actually an existing condition. And I assumed the, the side yard setback too, because they line up with the existing building. So I think that cumulatively, this minor in nature, and I have no problem supporting it. And I would love to move for approval with no conditions.
Thank you. And Mr. Clay, I think, is seconding. Moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands, please. That vote is unanimous. To carry the motion and approve the application. Number 31 is 1 Ellis Park Road. On this one, panel has before it submitted materials plus an arborist report, plus an RNFP and TRCA boundary map, plus covering letter and supporting materials from the owners 14 November. We have email correspondence from Ravine and Natural Protection, Natural Feature Protection. And we have a staff report from TRCA. There is both support and opposition in the form of correspondence. Support, 10 form letters from addresses on Ellis Park Road and Ellis Avenue. Opposition from the Swansea area ratepayers November 16 and from Barbara Solowen at 9 Ellis Park November 16. So let's go to the agent now and ask the agent, please, to join us.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We do hear you, yes.
Excellent. Good evening, Mr. Chair and panel. My name is Konstantinos Katsouros. I am the applicant and owner of. I am the applicant and owner of the property at 1 Ellis Park Road.
Very good. Just stand by for a moment. Moderator? We do have speakers standing by? Okay, very good. So, um, Mr. Katsaros, you have five minutes to present your application to the panel. Go ahead.
Wonderful. Uh, if we could maybe go to the supporting materials, uh, E4. I'll, um, the, the report does go into detail about the different, the nine variances that we are requesting, uh, approval of, uh, so what I'll do is I'll try and give a quick summary of those, of those nine. Uh, the property is, uh, an existing bungalow on which we are proposing to, uh, build a one and a half story addition on top within the existing footprint of the bungalow. There is a small rear entrance and slash mudroom that would be demolished at the rear with a, um, a small two-story addition of modest area. And then as well, there will be, uh, there is currently one car parking garage that will be demolished and rebuilt in the same location. There is a basement suite also proposed as part of this proposal. Variance is, if we could scroll down perhaps, uh, variances one and nine, um, have to do with height of the proposal. If you could scroll down, thank you. Excellent, there's an image that sort of describes the situation. Uh, the, the height of the building is, uh, currently set at 10 meters, and so the, the request is for, um, for that additional, uh, area at the top of the building that represents a rather small footprint. Uh, it's 16 and a half feet by 25 feet. As you can tell, as you can see in the image, the uppermost loft floor is set back from the north face and the east face of the second floor. Uh, that was to, A, reduce the overall area of the, of the building that was exceeding this height, but more specifically to also try and respect setbacks with my neighbor immediately at number three, Ellis Park Road. Um, variance number two, uh, is with regards to the height of the main front wall and, um, as it's, oh, if you could, that, that image is actually still very useful, thank you. The main front wall is measured at, uh, 9.59, um, but what I'd like to point out is that we have also set back the main front wall so as to break the continuity of the, the front plane of the house. The front plane of the house is current is, would not go beyond the existing, uh, condition now, which is set by the main front roof gable of the bungalow. So to reinforce the point that the house is basically sitting within the footprint of the existing bungalow. Um, variance number three has to do with FSI. We are, uh, requesting an FSI of 1.08. The area, the zoned area that our house is in is, uh, .35. And i- in our humble opinion, it's, um, very much aligned with, uh, governing properties that we, that are to the south and to the east of us, which are much larger in lot area, so this, we interpret this as being a, uh, an, uh, a limit for coverage of lot. In our case, we're not looking to expand the, the, the footprint of the house substantively. It's a very modest, uh, expansion at the rear. Uh, variance number four has to do with the front yard setback, which, um, is being measured as 1.44 meters, uh, whereas the permitted is 2.98. If you could kindly scroll down, there's a, there's another image in the report, if you could keep going. I'm foregoing reference to precedents, uh, as I, for brevity here. Uh, if you could keep going down. There we go, perfect. So the front yard setback is, um, the, the encroachment on the, on the minimum required is highlighted in green, and is a small wedge-shaped encroachment at the northeast corner of the, of the building. Uh, it's an existing condition, uh, that we are looking to maintain, um, and would, uh, obviously be translated up to the second floor. The fifth and sixth variances have to do with side yard setbacks. The interior, uh, side yard setback is 1.9 meters, and the exterior side yard setback is, uh, set at three meters, uh, because of the corner lot condition that we are, uh, dealing with. The proposal, again, to highlight is to maintain the existing footprint of the building.
Mr. Katsaros, I will, I will ask you for your concluding comments, please.
Okay. Concluding comments are that the, the property is seeking to expand, but all in a vertical orientation, not in an expansive way.
Thank you very much.
I'll put there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, panel, we do have people standing by to speak. Shall we go to them first? Okay, let's do that. And agent, or moderator?
Sabrina, you've been unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we do. State your name, please.
Okay, Sabrina McCleskey, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Swansea Area Ratepayers Association.
Very good, Sabrina, you have five minutes to, to, uh, present to the panel. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, so our concerns with the, this build are the overall size of the home, including the setbacks, the FSI and the height and form of the home, for the location of the property, which is on a corner lot at an intersection. So as a corner property, both the north and the west sides of the property are street-facing, reduced setbacks will impact visibility on both Ellis Avenue and Ellis, uh, Park Road or Morningside Avenue. So at the north, um, as we've heard, 1.44 meters is requested versus the zone 2.98, and at the west, .3 meters is requested versus the zone 3 meters. Now, .3 is the existing setback for the bungalow, but this variance will be magnified when the additional two stories are added. In terms of the overall side, size, comparison FSI numbers have been provided to support the larger size, however, the comparison data is for properties with different zoning rules. Um, comparison properties are in the R-zone with permitted FSI of .6 while on Ellis, uh, while 1 Ellis is in an RD-zone, which has a maximum permitted FSI of .35. A total proposed FSI of 1.08 represents three times the FSI in an RD-zone versus two times the FSI in an R-zone. And although the Committee of Adjustments have approved FSIs for the area, which are twice the zone maximum, the approval of an FSI which is three times the zone maximum would create an unwanted precedent for the area. In addition, it should be noted that the comparison homes, which were provided as part of the package from the owner and agent, um, have a much larger setback from the street-facing sides of the property than 1 Ellis would have. The owner agent has also provided diagrams showing height alignment with neighboring properties. The grade of the properties is not accounted for. If the grade were accounted for, it would be clear that the height of this property is not in alignment with neighboring properties. Removal of the third floor loft space would bring the home height in better alignment with neighboring properties and would maintain an appropriate relationship between buildings, notwithstanding the setback concerns. At nine requested variances, this proposed change is not minor and not appropriate or desirable for the area. The change doesn't maintain an appropriate relationship between the buildings or maintain the neighborhood character since the home is three times the zoned FSI. The proposed build does not meet the four tests, and we respectfully request that you reject the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. Panel members, any questions for this speaker? Okay, I'm not hearing any, and I'll just check now with the moderator to see if the other speaker has been raised. No. So, there are no further speakers. We can return now to the agent, who will have an opportunity to rebut to concerns voiced by the last speaker. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, reference has been made to the front yard north setback and the exterior street-facing side yard setback, which is on the west side. In both instances, these setbacks are existing conditions set by the existing bungalow. The proposed front yard setback is, encroachment is not increased beyond the existing condition and is, is minimal in nature. It's, as I mentioned earlier, it's a small wedge-shaped, um, portion of the northeast corner of the property, of the building. The proposed side yard setback is based on existing planes of masonry wall, and to, to note, there's only a small overclad encroachment because we are adding insulation on the exterior face of the existing brick walls. I note that reference has been made to visibility on both Ellis Avenue and Ellis Park Road. Uh, I wish to note that the proposed renovation will not alter existing sightlines to the road intersection of Ellis Avenue and Ellis Park Road. Pedestrian and vehicular sightlines will remain unchanged, and there's no safety issue, if that was the concern. Alternatively, the proposed renovation will not obstruct nor alter existing axial view corridors to the Morningside High Park Presbyterian Church, which sits at the top of Ellis Avenue. I noticed, I note that reference has been made to the proposed FSI of the renovation being approximately three times the permitted FSI. While this FSI factor may be quite appropriate for the much larger lots of land generally to the south and east of the site, it is felt that this FSI multiplier is not reflective of the, of the project's intent to not spread or increase lot coverage substantively, and instead is limited to a very modest rear addition. Um, the subject lot is also much more closely aligned with the lot sizes found in the R 0.6 zoned area, which exists right across the street at the, at the corner of Kennedy Avenue and Morningside, and for which there are precedents that were referenced to, uh, within my report. Reference has also been made to the height of the proposed renovation that is too tall, and the grade of the properties has not been accounted for. I respectfully, uh, disagree with that proposal. The established grade, as required, has been calculated and accurately shown on the drawings, and the sloped conditions of the site have been therefore represented, and very intentional design moves have been made to reduce the perceived impact of the uppermost loft floor. As I mentioned before, it's set back 2.1 meters from the front face of the building and 1.7 meters from the east face of the building. And lastly, I will point to the fact that I have received 10 letters of support from almost all of my immediate neighbors, and in all cases, they expressed support for the project and felt it would be an appropriate and welcome improvement to the subject site. Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. So, panel members, questions for the applicant? Mr. Byatt, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't have any, uh, questions, but, uh, I will certainly take the opportunity to compliment the, uh, the applicant for the, um, architectural renditions that are really, makes, makes it very easy for, certainly for me to understand exactly what is being done. I think it's a, it's quite a innovative way of expanding space. Uh, the design is fine, um, so I, I, this is an application I can certainly support.
Mr. Clay, then Ms., then Ms. Chan.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'm, uh, I too am very supportive of this application. I, uh, I, I too thought the supporting material was, uh, was quite helpful and quite illustrative of what the proposal actually is. I, I don't agree with, uh, Sarah's, um, comments about how this, this, uh, would be inappropriate for this area. I do know this area fairly well. I, I do note that on the, uh, west side of Ellis Avenue, uh, almost every house along that strip has been redeveloped into two, two and a half, and three-story dwellings. I, I think, uh, the applicant's point about FSI, 1.08 in this neighborhood is not egregious at all, and notwithstanding this 35, uh, .35 requirement, I think that's outdated for certain properties, and I think this falls in that category. I'm particularly, uh, supportive. I, I thought the, uh, design with the third story setbacks was very sympathetic to the surrounding houses, and the slope towards the rear, towards the south, similarly, was very sympathetic to, uh, the surrounding residences, so, um, and, uh, it's on the existing footprint, both the house and the garage, uh, so I don't see this as being a negative impact at all. In fact, I think it would be a positive contribution to the, uh, to the neighborhood.
Very good.
So I would support it.
Is anyone?
I'm happy to move a motion if anyone else doesn't, if anyone wants, doesn't want to comment.
Proceed.
Uh, I'll, I'll move approval of this application, and there are no conditions.
It is moved to approve and seconded by Mr. Byatt. Moved and seconded for approval, all those in favor, please, show hands. Very good, that's a unanimous vote, and that does carry, uh, and the, the application thereby is approved. So, we finish this segment of applications, and I think we'll take a 10-minute recess at this juncture, and, um, return at 5:35, 5:36 to go into the final group of applications. So 10-minute recess, thank you.
Hi, Michael. We've just called you to get ready for your item, which we'll have pretty soon. We're going to put you on mute as an attendee.
We resume. The next item up before the panel is number 33, 51 Douglas Crescent.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Item number 32, 676 Pap Avenue.
Quite so.
Yes.
Let's go back to number 32. 676 Pap Avenue. And on this application. Before the panel are those materials submitted with the application, plus a cover letter from the agent, November 16. And we'll ask the agent to join us, please, by stating your name.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. My name is Trevor Gaines, and I am the agent here on behalf of the owners.
Good afternoon to you. Very good, okay. Panel members. Do you have any questions for Mr. Gaines? Mr. Nipfel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gaines, I'm referring to your covering letter. Am I led to believe that the residential zoning here is recent, or has it always been is the property always been zoned the same way?
As far as I know, it's always been residential, fully residential, and like I said in my covering letter, we did all the archive search, and we have proof of commercial uses on this ground floor section from 1970. And even in the document in that covering letter, in the last page, it labels it as "existing grocery store," which starts to believe that it was even there prior to 1970. So it's just one of these kind of leftover things which should have been cleaned up in 2013 when they rolled up the new bylaw. However, they didn't, and now we have a legal nonconforming status, and every time you want to alter, amend, renovate, we have to go to committee of adjustment to get it approved.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Any further questions, panel? Don't hear any, so let's, I think we can take the application into committee for a motion. Mr. Byatt, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. I think, again, this is one of those parts of the city that has got a very interesting history and sort of mixed uses. I don't see any issue with this particular application. There are no concerns from any departments, the city departments either. So I'd be quite happy to move a motion to approve with no conditions.
That motion is seconded by Mr. Nipfel. It is moved and seconded to approve. All in favor, please show of hands. And the vote is unanimous. To carry the motion and approve the application. Thank you. Number 33 is 51 Douglas Crescent. Here we have the submitted materials, plus an arborist report, plus a cover letter from the agent, November 16, email correspondence from Ravine and Natural Feature Protection, Urban Forestry, and a staff report from TRCA. Agent, please join us.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Maria DeNegri from DeNegri-Gassai Studio. I am the agent and architect, acting on behalf of the clients.
Thank you very much.
Do you need a presentation?
Nope. I don't. Panel members, presentation required? No, we're not hearing a request for one. Panel may have questions for you. Any questions, panel? I'm not hearing any questions either. Is there, Maria, any one thing you'd like us to know about your application that we really ought to know?
I think my cover letter was pretty self-explanatory. There's two modest variances that we're requesting, but I mean, maybe perhaps the most important thing is that we have worked from the onset with the authorities having jurisdiction, so RNFP and TRCA have been very much involved and kept up to date, and I think that that shows that we do currently have their support for what we're doing.
Very good, okay. Okay, then. With that in mind, let's take it into committee for a motion, please. Mr. Nipfel, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a remarkable application. It could be a masterclass in how to design contextually and collaboratively. The applicant has gone to some pains to reflect conditions around the site, the most notable being the way the ground floor is cut back to link the setbacks of the adjacent properties on either side. As Maria indicated, she's also been working collaboratively with the reporting agencies. In short, I wish we saw more applications like this. It's my pleasure to propose a motion of approval without any conditions.
Thank you. And that is seconded by Mr. Byatt. Moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, please show hands. Unanimous vote, motion carried, and the application is approved. On number 34, 10 Bartlett Avenue, we have submitted materials before us, we have emailed correspondence from Transportation, and there is support correspondence from 12 Bartlett Avenue, which would appear to be next door, from Carols Silva. So let's have the agent join us, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and committee members. My name is Michael Schrazopar, and I'm the agent on behalf of the homeowners at 10 Bartlett. I reside at 3 Mary Terrence Court, Markham, Ontario, L6B 0B1.
Good afternoon to you, okay. Okay, panel, any questions here for the applicant? So, applicant, I'll just ask you a question, then. Your objective here is for storage, it's not a laneway suite.
That is correct. We're not intending to use this as a habitable space. The homeowners have a growing family. They just want the additional area within the garage so that they can actually store, you know, camping stuff or additional things that they have with their growing family. They have no intention to make this into a laneway suite. We're not proposing any kind of water system or anything with regards to that. It's strictly just to be used as storage, and some of the variances that are being triggered here has to do with just the layout so that you can actually have stairs within the actual garage space so that you can access the second-story portion of the house and not impede on the actual parking area within the garage.
Okay. Anybody ready with a motion? Ms. Chan, go ahead.
Yeah, I think this is a straightforward application. I mean, the only thing that stands out to me is the setback from the center line of the lane, but since transportation is an existing condition anyway, but also, transportation has no problem with it, so I don't think I have any problem with this one either. So, okay, Larry, you want to?
Yeah, I just want to go on record. I think I'm going to be the outlier on this one, but I'm not going to be supporting this application. I'm of the view that when ancillary structures exceed the height, four-meter height bylaw, I feel that that height bylaw can only be breached when there's a public good involved, like a laneway house or more rental accommodation. I don't support higher-than-required structures for things like storage, so I won't be supporting it, but I suspect others will.
Well, I'll just say, Mr. Clay, I agree with you. I was thinking along the same lines, but other comments, please?
I didn't, I wasn't finished quite yet.
You weren't quite finished, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
You were actually making a motion, I think. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right, so what I'm saying is, I can see your point, but also, look at the larger community, there's no opposition, neither from the planning department or from the neighbors, so I just thought maybe the impact is not that big, so I'm in support.
Okay, so you're not, Ms. Chan, so you're not going to make a motion?
Okay, yeah, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Okay, you are making a motion for approval. Mr. Byatt, are you seconding?
I'll second that, Chair.
Okay. It is moved and seconded, therefore, to approve. Those in favor, please show of hands. Those opposed, please show of hands. And the vote is three to two, not to carry the motion. The motion is defeated, and the application is, oh, the application, that motion is defeated to approve. So, we need a new motion. Is there another motion? Anyone else have a motion to make? Mr. Clay, go ahead.
Sure, for the reasons I stated, I move a motion to refuse this application.
Okay, is there a second for that? It does receive a second from Mr. Nipfel. Moved and seconded to refuse. Those in favor, please show of hands. Those opposed. Okay, let the record show that Ms. Chan and Mr. Byatt were in dissent, but the application, the motion is carried, and the application is thereby refused. And that moves the panel along to number 35. 357 Milverton Boulevard. On this application, the panel is dealing with submitted materials. There is correspondence in interest or concern from 355 Milverton, and also from Andy Stratus. There is support, communication in the form of eight form letters, signed by owners on Milverton Boulevard. And...
Good afternoon, committee.
Good afternoon to you. Okay, please state your name.
My name's Lynn Houston. I am at 49 Oak Crest Avenue, and I'm the agent for the owner.
Very good, okay. Panel members, questions for the agent? I'm not hearing any. I'll just make a comment to you, agent. Looks like you've done a good, made a good effort at consultation in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
I think at this stage, then, we can take the application into committee.
Sorry, Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Just a quick question with regard to the, there's a balcony, what looks like a balcony on the third floor. Haven't quite got to see how far it protrudes.
It's about two feet.
About two feet. Will it have an impact or an overlook on the neighboring property on the one side? Actually, probably on both sides.
Two feet isn't really a practical usable balcony, but it's necessary for fire escape.
Okay.
Because our third floor is just that little bit above seven meters.
It'd have to be a very slum person to have here.
Yeah, so it's really a place of refuge.
Thank you.
Chair, just a quick one. I was scrolling through. I couldn't recall whether the adjacent semi is a supporter or not. I couldn't tell, maybe...
Not on the list of supporters.
No. The adjacent neighbor does not speak English, so she could not really effectively write a letter of support. But we have been in discussion with her, using her daughter as an interpreter. And they're aware of and do not oppose the proposal.
Oh, okay, that's great. Thank you for that.
Okay, then, if we can take the application then into committee for a motion. Mr. Byatt.
Thank you, Chair. Again, this is fairly straightforward, and there is no opposition particularly than the adjoining neighbor. I don't see any downside to this particular application, so I'd like to move motion to approve. There are no conditions attached.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Clay, seconds. It is therefore moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands. And the motion is carried by unanimous vote. The application is approved. Number 3677, Clarendon. We're looking at submitted materials, cover letter from the agent, Arbus Report, presentation materials from the agent November 15, and two site-specific bylaws, 2019 both. We have commenting reports from Urban Forestry and TRCA. And there is a staff report from Urban Forestry. So we'll ask the agent, please, join us.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of committee. My name is Adam Brown. I'm here on behalf of the applicant with this proposal. And we did present a five-piece slideshow for you that I think we submitted as well.
Very good. Let me just see if the panel would like a presentation. Panel members, anyone needing a presentation? Or would you rather put questions to the applicant? Mr. Nipfel, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brown, am I correct that in variance number two, the only reason there is a variance is because clear story skylights are not one of the protrusions in that very, very long list of things that can go on?
Yeah, you are exactly right. When I was reading it and I was going, ah, that's a miss, but yes, that's exactly right.
Okay, thanks a lot.
So this just seems like a fairly technical adjustment to a site-specific bylaw that's already in play. Is that fair?
That is fair. We did, the slides we presented show you that most of the variances to the height is because there's a slight slant in the property. This has been going through a pretty extensive landscape, not landscape, site plan process. And the variances, two of them are related to what was just highlighted. And then on the side, there's a landscape strip that exceeds the standard, but because it angles in, so it's wider in the back and a little narrower at a portion in the front. But yes, very technical and very cooperative process with staff doing the site plan. And I'm sorry, but I don't have my full voice right now trying to get through this COVID craziness, but...
Well, we'll save you from having to answer anymore. I think that satisfies most of us.
Thank you, sir.
Let's then take it into committee for a motion, yes. Mr. Nipfel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move approval of this application. I think as Mr. Clay had indicated, these are basically technical amendments. I don't know that anybody would even notice the changes if you had a competition. So I really can't see that there's anything negative involved in approving the applications. I'd like to move approval subject to forestry condition number two and wish the applicant a good recovery from COVID.
Seconded by Mr. Byatt. There we are. So moved and seconded to approve. Please, show of hands, all in favor. Motion carried. The application is approved. Number 37. It's 1555 Queen Street East. Before us are the submitted materials, a revised site plan, floor plans and elevation, photographs, cover letter from the agent, October. There is a council decision from, council decision, oh, Toronto County Community Council Decision, TE 16.5. Two site-specific bylaws, 2020, and a staff report from community planning. Agent, please join us.
Good evening, Chair and members of the committee. I'm Peter Zimmerman. I'm Senior Director in the Development Division at Toronto Community Housing and the lead on the redevelopment of this Don Somerville site, as the project is known. This is a minor technical amendment to bylaw 832-2020 to account for an increased easement required by Toronto Water. There's no changes in the units. We had to adjust some of the areas of the building to maintain residential suites. And we moved some balconies from the easement side of the property to the southern side, which accounted for the variance for the setback. We've been supported by planning on this, but we've been required to come to committee to seek approval for these minor changes to the zoning, the variances.
Planning does have a condition that they've asked us to apply if we approve. You aware of that?
I am.
Any comments on their condition?
No, we are accepting of their conditions.
Okay. Very good. Panel, any questions for Speaker? No? In that case, let's move to a motion, please. Mr. Nipfel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the applicant indicated, this is very much a technical amendment. There is no downside to approval of this that I can see. I'd like to move approval subject to the planning department condition. And for those of you that don't want to spend the hour I did trying to find map number three, it's attached to the two bylaws that are at the end. Bylaw 831-2020 and 832-2020. If you go all the way through there, there are maps at the end. And map three, which the planning department is referring to, is near the end of those two documents. It took me forever to get through all this information. And trust me, I don't think that there's any negative implications to this application. And please do recommend approval.
Very good. We'll see if, I think you have second from Mr. Byatt. Mr. Byatt, you're seconding?
And thank you for informing us of the location of the map, Carl. Thank you.
Only took me half an hour to find it, Carl.
Oh, well, there, next one's on you.
It is therefore moved and seconded to approve. All in favor, please, show of hands. That motion is carried. The application is approved. Thank you. 38 Stanhope Avenue, number 30, pardon me, item number 38, 2 Stanhope Avenue. Here we are. We have before us submitted materials. There is a revised plan, revised plans, eight photographs, cover letters from the architect February, cover letter from the agent November. We have staff report from Engineering and Construction, also from Urban Forestry. There's a revised staff report from Engineering and Construction from August. The original was from July. And there is support in the form of a 41 signature petition signed by the owners and occupants of addresses on Hope Dale Avenue.
774133. Unfortunately, I'm...
O'Connor Drive and Pape Avenue. So, let's have the agent join us, please.
Hello, committee chair and committee members. My name is Mario Calami from Calami Law Professional Corporation, and I'm representing the applicant. So the address is 425 Allan Street, Toronto, Ontario, M3J2T8.
Thank you. Just stand by for a moment, please. So moderator on this, we have one or two speakers standing by. Another speaker has connected. And one of them was speaking in interest, and the other one, we weren't sure whether it was interest or what it was. So, okay. Well, have you been trying for some time to connect? You have, okay. Pardon me.
Chair, can you just confirm then if that's the case? I didn't see anything in opposition in the core material or the supplementary.
Yeah.
Did I miss something or?
Okay. Just a second, moderator. Let's see, all right, so... Well, there may not have been any correspondence in opposition. That doesn't mean there isn't a...
No, totally understand. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Okay, well...
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe that staff have made multiple attempts to contact both speakers so we can move forward.
So, okay. So, we are going to move forward then, having attempted to contact the speakers that had pre-registered and being unable to do so. So, panel members, at this stage, where we stand is that we have the agent with us. Anyone like a presentation on the application? Anyone with questions for the agent? Mr. Clay?
Yeah, just, there's a bunch of material with respect to engineering conditions. I just want to know what the status of your application is vis a vis the engineering comments. Are you guys, have you satisfied everything that engineer is requiring?
Our client has been in revision just recently, I think in the last couple of days with respect to what engineering was requesting. ECS was requesting. We believe that we have satisfied them, but they haven't provided an answer yet. We are okay to proceed with the condition, with the condition for the approval on the engineering.
Thank you.
In their last comment, they were just referring to that they wanted to see the upstream maintenance hole, which wasn't provided for in the previous drawing. So it was provided in the last drawing that has been submitted to them.
Okay. Mr. Nipfel, I saw you had a question there.
My question was similar. It's in the, excuse me, it's in the third paragraph of the engineering report. It says, "Given the above concern, we request the committee not to proceed with scheduling the consent." Like Larry, do we assume that engineering, well, they must have been satisfied because you did schedule the consent. Do we need to add anything other than the standard consent conditions if we approve this?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, was that?
Just a second, okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would, yes, please refer to the Engineering Construction Services Staff Report, received August 4. And then there are conditions through the consent application that you can impose, as well as the standard conditions that we typically put in our decisions for consent.
Somebody put the report that you just mentioned on the screen. The one I've got is earlier. It's dated July.
Yes, I wouldn't refer to the July 5 report. I would refer to what is titled Revised ECS Staff Report, August 3. But we...
Still need those conditions then. Okay, thanks very much, Sabrina.
But we received it August the 4th.
Thanks very much, Sabrina.
Okay, then. Mr. Byatt, yes, go ahead.
Just a question. Perhaps I'm a little out to lunch there, but I'm looking at the supplemental materials and the revised plans for 38D1 and 2. I might be a little bit ahead of where I should be. But just looking at the site plan, both the driveways that are intended to be built show asphalt driveway. And I was going to suggest that those be, the condition be that they be permeable materials, not asphalt.
Applicant, comments on that?
There is no variance for green space. That's why it wasn't like climbing field was necessary to do permeable driveways. But I'm sure he'll be open to that consideration if required.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further questions for the applicant panel? Not hearing any. Let's take the application into committee and move toward a motion. Ms. Chan, go ahead.
Yeah, after studying all the material, I have no problem with this development. I think that it is a good proposal and a good use of the lot. And I have no problem on the surface. And also, I think the building, proposed building, the variances are still minor in nature. And I don't have any problems supporting this.
Thank you. Mr. Byatt?
I would concur with Ms. Chan. And just as I've mentioned earlier, I'd like to include a condition that the driveways be produced out of permeable materials. And I believe, of course, the engineering condition that we need to apply as well.
Why don't you go with the, why don't you propose a motion then? And let's, with what you have in mind.
Go ahead, Ms. Chan.
Okay, I will propose for approval for the surface and subject to the standard surface regulation and conditions and also the engineering report dated August 9, 2022. And the approval of 38B and 38C, 38C, subject to forestry condition number three.
Accept the, but here's recommendation.
And also, I'm so sorry, yeah. And also, both 38B and C, subject to using permeable papers at the front driveway.
Would you consider friendly amendment of screening of the rear deck as shown on the drawings? It's shown on drawing A3.
And tied to, and tied to drawing A3 regarding the...
Or screening.
Yeah, the privacy screening on the rear decks or balconies.
Very good.
Sorry, and through you, Mr. Chair, just point of clarification. The ECS report is dated August 4, not 9.
August 4, yes, yes.
Okay, August 4. Okay, August four.
Okay, so I see Mr. Byatt seconding that motion. So the motion is to, in one vote, is to look after both the consent and the two minor variance applications. Just so we all know what we're voting on, it's all going to be a single vote. It is moved and seconded, therefore, to approve the consent and the two minor variance applications. Those in favor, please, show of hands. And that vote is unanimous to carry the motion and to approve the three elements of the application. Number thirty-nine. One thirteen A Cosburn Avenue. We have before us minutes of the February twenty-third public hearing, revised plans, site plans, floor plans, elevations, nine photographs, and a two thousand fourteen Committee of Adjustment Decision. There is correspondence, or there's comment from City Planning, April twenty-one, June twenty-ninth, also from Transportation Services, twenty-nine June. There's a staff report also from City Planning, received on November the sixteen. Okay. We'll ask the agent to join us, please.
Good afternoon, committee chair and committee members. My name is Nick Muzuris. I reside at one Rosford Road in Scarborough.
Good afternoon to you. Okay, panel members. On number thirty-nine, do you have any questions for Mr. Muzuris? Mr. Byatt?
Just a question. I'm not sure if the applicant is aware of, I think it's planning that has recommended refusal of this application.
Yes, we're aware. If I may say, there was an original application for this exact situation on February twenty-third, so in the beginning of the year. So we went through this process, and the planning even back then refused this application. Through the through the committee meeting on February twenty-third, the application was deferred by the committee to allow for change that can be supported by the appropriate departments. Then we contacted Urban Forestry and the Transportation Departments, and we have their support overall with the revised design that we prepared since then. The reason for planning department that they did not support it was because it was non-conforming, and hence, we got a refusal from the beginning.
Well, I think that, just to be clear, I think planning is recommending refusal because of the previous OMB decision.
Yes. Yes, this was discussed in the first, was discussed in the first committee meeting on February twenty-third. Nonetheless, the committee recommended that this gets deferred, and we redesigned the front yard to better reflect the conditions that they'd like to see from an urban development perspective.
Mr. Muzuris, have you seen, and are you aware of the fact that planning as recently as November the fifteenth, that's just eight days ago, planning was still recommending refusal?
I just saw it today.
Yes, so just a week ago. So any redesign you may have done would have been taken into consideration, but planning is still recommending refusal?
I know. They contacted me about two weeks ago. They sent me an email and said that they liked improvement on the design. They asked me a question as to the landscape portion. Originally, the front yard had five point eight square meters of softscaping. Now we have twenty-six square meters. We have increased it drastically, and the remaining of the front yard is papers. If you actually look at a picture of what the adjacent house looks like, right, it's basically, it's, it suits a lot better of what we're planning to do, and I think what we're asking is not, is improvement overall to the neighborhood, not just on our site.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I don't think the issue is whether it is good or bad, or better than it was. I think the issue is, Mr. Clay indicated, the OMB ruled that the landscaping for the front yard had to be fifty-six percent. You don't have that, and I think that's why planning's recommending refusal.
Ms. Chen, you had a question?
And I can, can I add? Actually, the OMB decision is also, is actually was, not decision, it was that refusal of the appeal, which is also the refusal of the front yard parking. It's got, it's got two things, so it doesn't matter how much landscaping you have increased. The front yard parking, they still do not, the OMBs all refuse that. So given that it's very hard to go back and apply for the same thing, and thinking this time, we will have a different rationale to approve that. That's the difficulty I have.
All right, then, are there any further questions or discussion with the applicant panel, or can we take this into committee? Is everyone through with questions? And Mr. Clay?
No, I was going to start the discussion in committee, Chair.
Let's go into committee. Okay.
I think if we, as we've all discussed, I mean, you know, when this was originally, I was on the committee when it was brought forward in February, so I recall this discussion. I think what we were thinking at the time was that if, if the applicant could convince community planning, as well as forestry and transportation, that they had a good proposal, then we might want to reconsider it. But I think, given the comments we've received from planning, and frankly, that, you know, when the, when the board approved the actual severance or the construction of that new home, the trade-off was that no front part parking, and you had to have certain percentage of landscaping. So that was the quid pro quo in order to get the construction approved. And I frankly don't think it's in our interest to overturn that. I don't see any reason to overturn that. In my view, I would agree with community planning's recommendation that we abide by the OMB order in this case.
Mr. Clay, I think it'd be, it'd be safe to go ahead with the motion on that, please.
Sure, I'll, I'll move refusal of this application.
That is seconded by Mr. Byatt. It is moved and seconded to refuse. All those in favor, please, show hands. And that is a unanimous vote to carry that motion. The application is thereby refused. is five twenty-five Richmond Street West. Here we have meetings, minutes of the meeting from March the second, public hearing. There is a revised site plan, floor plans and elevations. There is a cover letter from the planning consultant, fourteen November, and presentation, presentation material from the agent, November fifteen. We have comment from City Planning from October, and from Transportation Services, November the third. So, Agent, please join us.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Siaz Anjani from fifteen Allstate Parkway, Markham, and I'm the architect and the applicant on behalf of the owner of five two five Richmond Street West.
Good evening to you. And it is evening. You're quite right. Okay.
Yes.
Very good. All right. Panel members, pretty clear here what the applicant is seeking to do. Any questions for him? Mr. Clay?
I'll just ask the obvious one. This was deferred last time I was here because I think the committee at the time had some concerns about amenity space, and I just wanted your sense of what's changed, and what did you do to address some of those concerns in this application?
That's correct. So one of the concerns that, that community planning had was with respect to the layout of the amenity space on the tenth floor. So what we had was a completely different design when we started, where we had the proposed management office as, as part of the amenity space, which interfered with, with a few items. Back then, it made sense. It was, it was the logical decision in terms of construction, but we heard the comments, we went back to the drawing board, and we made improvements by relocating the the management office to a corner that would then leave the, the rest of the amenity space free of any, any kind of interruption. So the, all the features within the amenity space, including the kitchen and, and, and the barrier-free washroom, and all the windows are all uninterrupted based on the latest design.
Thank you. Looks like we can now take this application into committee.
Recalling. Please say thank you. Goodbye.
Hello, Jason speaking.
Hello, I'm ready to move a motion.
Ms. Chen, go ahead.
Yeah, I have studied the revised plan. I think it's much better plan, and actually, they have increased both the amenity space and also the indoor amenity space from last time. And I have no problem of supporting this, and I would like to move for approval with no conditions.
Thank you. And that is seconded by Mr. Niffel. It is moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, please, show hands. That vote is unanimous to carry the motion, and the application is approved. Number forty-one is fifty-one Binns Carth. The panel has before it minutes from the July thirteenth public hearing. Submitted materials, cover letter from the agent, September twelve, email correspondence from Urban Forestry, Ravine and Natural Feature Protection, November sixteen. So, Agent, please join us.
Nadeem, you've been unmuted.
My name is Nadeem Merfenn, NIA Architects, but this application is not mine. Mine is the next one, thirty-five Condor.
Okay, then, just stand by, and we'll get to you shortly.
Hello? Hi? Can you hear me?
Yes, we do. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Ian Starkey of Starkey Groups, Starkey Group Architects, Inc., and I live in Mono, Ontario, eight seven three three eight two, fifth line EHS. And I'm the applicant for this, for this case.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay. Let's check with the panel, Mr. Starkey, and see if they would like to have a presentation, or whether they'd like to put questions to you. Panel members, anything?
Okay.
Again, I think, I think you've done good consultation on this one, by the way.
Hmm, thank you. Yes, we tried to work with the neighbors to satisfy their, their ambitions for the project as well. It really, we had to make a few reductions and change the design a bit, but I think everyone is happy now, so.
Okay. Panel members, if there's no questions, we can actually take the application into committee for a motion. Mr. Niffel, go ahead. Carl, you've made it. You're muted.
Makes it hard to hear me. I have a question for Mr. Starkey on the second floor balcony. It's very extensive, and I'm wondering if the neighbors have had any concerns about it. It seems, though, that at least one end of it wouldn't need to be screened, perhaps. Where it protrudes out on one side, it should be screened for privacy. I'd like your comments on that.
Okay, well, what we did was, the neighbor to the, the east, Andrew Clark at number fifty-three, he had some problems because initially, we had a, a projection that was, that was thrusting out into the, the rear yard that we cut back by a hundred and seventy-three square feet, and then also removed the deck from the third floor level as well. And he was satisfied with those changes.
So the drawing that's on the, on the screen right now, is that still accurate, or has that deck been cut back?
That's been cut back. That has been cut back.
We have.
Yeah, it's kind of weird because it happens on a bunch of different levels, but the, it doesn't project.
Can you direct us to whatever drawing it is that shows how big the deck is? I can understand the gentleman being.
Yeah, yeah, if you can scroll down further, you'll find on sheet one oh two. Yeah, you can see there, yeah. So the, the old projection used to go right out to the corner, but that was cut back.
So this deck here doesn't create a privacy problem because it's back of his, the end of his house, right?
That's correct. And there's, there's also planting as well. There's a bunch of trees, and that's, that's why we did that was to make it better for him.
So if we were to call, would you have any difficulty if, if any approval was tied to plans? And if so, how would we make sure that we got this plan? Is this?
Oh, that's fine if you want to tie it to plans. That's, that's fine with me.
Okay, but what, how do we refer to this plan? Because we've got two second floor plans in our package.
Oh, there's, there's an existing second floor plan, and then the proposed second floor plan. So I, I would reference the sheet number A one oh two.
Hey, thanks.
Yeah.
Mr. Byatt?
Yeah, I was just, just to do with the same thing, but I'm looking at the east and west elevations. I believe the, it's drawing A two three and probably A two two. Sorry, not A two two, but A two one, two one and two three, which give east and west elevations.
Yes.
The balconies do protrude, and I don't see anything in the way of screening. Is screening required? Would they be overlooked that would then lead to neighbors requesting some screening?
Yeah, that, there's actually a, a bunch of trees that are on the property line, sir, and, and that's why there is no screening included for that deck. But that is something that, you know, if, if the committee feels that's necessary to do, we could, we could add that.
Thank you.
Okay, then, I think at that stage, then, we can go into committee and move toward a motion. Anyone ready with a motion?
I'll give it a shot, Chair.
Yes, Mr. Byatt, go ahead.
Oh, Ms. Chen, did you want to go ahead?
Only about, you just mentioned the privacy screen on balcony. I just thought that maybe it's not necessary at the case because they have done this after the discussion with the neighbor. And then they're satisfied with it. So I thought, and also, he explained a whole bunch of trees on that side. They already switched, right, the balcony? And I thought maybe.
In addition, it's pulled, it's pulled back, it's pulled back so that it doesn't protrude out further than the neighbor's building.
So I thought that because they have made discussions, so maybe.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll go with that. In which case, Chair, I'd like to move motion with there aren't any conditions attached.
Motion to approve, no conditions. Okay, and that is seconded by Ms. Chen. It is therefore moved and seconded to approve without condition. Those in favor, please, show hands. And that vote carries the motion unanimously. The application is approved. Thank you. Thank you. Number forty-two Condor Avenue. Before the committee are the minutes from the August twenty-fourth public hearing. Submitted materials. Agent's letter received sixteen November. Staff report from Urban Forestry. There is support and opposition. Eight form letters in support from addresses on Condor Avenue. And in opposition, one written submission from thirty-three Condor, which would appear to be a next door property. So Agent, once again, thanks for your patience. Let's have you join us again, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Nadeem Ehrfan, NIA Architects, ten Miller Business Court, suite seven ten, Scarborough, Ontario, M one B, three C six.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just stand by for a moment. Now, moderator, we have someone standing by in opposition? We do, okay. So, Agent, you'll have five minutes to present your application to the panel. Go ahead now.
Mr. Chair, this application was originally scheduled for August twenty-fourth hearing. Due to the incorrect public notice, we requested a deferral. And as instructed in the previous hearing, we reached out to the neighbor at thirty-three Condor to discuss their concerns. Since then, a correct notice has been submitted. Originally, we asked for a variance which is on the side yard setback. That has been eliminated. And a new variance has been added as FSI, and that was the missing deficiency in the last notice. There are no drawings changes in the application. And we have discussed our application with the community planning in the last hearing, before the last hearing. There were no concerns. We have, our owners have gone door to door and he was able to secure eight support letters and which are submitted as a supporting material for your consideration and review. There are only three variances, wall height and front porch encroachment and FSI. We have put together analysis of or comparison of the previous decisions as precedence. And it's on the page seven of the fifteen on the support material. There are various which have been approved by the committee. And community planning has reviewed these variances. They find these are very moderate and we seek the approval from the committee members. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Now, we have one speaker standing by. In opposition, let's hear that speaker panel and then you'll have an opportunity for questions.
Hi there, can everyone hear me?
We do hear you.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Yeah, so.
Just a moment, please.
Yep.
Just a moment. If you would, I'm sorry, maybe you stated your name, but I missed it. Please state your name once again.
Sure, my name is Ronan Bauer and I live at thirty-three Condor Avenue. The residence right adjacent to thirty-five.
You're next door.
Yes, right next door.
Go ahead, you have five minutes.
Okay, great. So for the most part, we are not in opposition of the three variants put forward. However, we do want to challenge the third one. We understand that there's going to be an increase in area for the new residents and that's fine. The one thing that we're in opposition of is the side yard setbacks. So currently, from what we understand, you require a point nine meter setback. And a portion of the new residence is currently at point six meters from the lot line. And our concern is we have, the side of our house has five primary windows, two bedrooms, two the basement, two the dining rooms. And with the building coming this close to our side of the house, we're concerned about the reduction in light and also privacy. Now, we did meet with the architect to kind of walk over the design, talk about the design. He did point out that there is a chapter in the bylaw that states that you could encroach more than point nine meters into the side yard setback if you don't have windows or door along that portion of the wall. When we reviewed that chapter and the setback, it was under our understanding that the entire facade should not have any windows or doors. In this case, their facade does have three windows. The portion that does protrude an additional foot into the setback doesn't have any windows. But we're looking at the entire wall as a whole. So that's one of our concerns. The other concern that we have is that the overhang for the roof protrudes an additional one foot and as a result would block additional light. There's concern about icicles forming and causing a slippery slope between the two homes. We do use that side of our house quite often to access the backyard and that is a bit of a concern to us. In addition to that, we have a couple of other items that we wanted to bring up. The south elevation of thirty-five Condor doesn't show a fire shutter on the first story window. And also that first story window, it's essentially their dining room window, looks directly into our dining room window. So we're asking if that window could shift at least two meters. That would be east, sorry, west, to avoid direct view into our dining room. The other concern that we have is that we noticed that there is a sod area between the two properties that goes up to the edge of the new property. But between the two homes, we have no idea what the material is, if it's permeable material. And also the slope, the slope elevations that we've noticed on their property slopes a little bit towards our property. And given that it's very close proximity, we have a concern about water and infiltrating our, you know, our basement and so on. Those are the items I wanted to bring up and state our concern.
Thank you very much. Panel members, any questions? For the neighbor next door. Okay, then we'll go back now then to the agent and ask the agent to comment on what you've said in rebuttal.
I would like to bring on the slide for the side elevation of the drawings, the south elevation.
Just bear with us while we bring it up.
Okay, Mr. Chair, for the ground and the main floor, we have a setback of point nine, which meets zoning bylaw standard. And if we were to, on the south elevation, the portion of the wall which has the previous drawing.
Just a moment, let's bring it up. Before we proceed with your talk, let's have that elevation. This is the south elevation? That's, you're talking about a side elevation?
It's in the supporting materials, Chair.
This is the front elevation. So, Mr. Chair, even if we look at that, the house, the portion of the wall that has the windows is point nine meter away from the property line, meeting the bylaw requirement. And the portion of the wall which does not have the windows meets also the bylaw, it is point six meter away, whereas bylaw required point four or five. So the zoning examiner, again, you know, reviewed this elevation and they determined that there is no side yard setback requirement either on north side or south side. It meets the bylaw requirement. So in order for, to have the windows, we meet the compliance with the bylaw. There is no variance for the side yard setback. Now, referring to the question on the fire shitters, it's a building code matter and we will meet with the, you know, meet the requirements of the building code. If a window is provided within the limiting distance of the building code, if it is required to have a fire shutter, we will provide a fire shutter. Going back to the sod, in order to meet the bylaw requirement of the front yard landscaping, between the property line and to the new driveway, we are proposing sod so we can meet the landscape requirement. It has nothing to do with, you know, making difficulty for the neighbor. Going to the grading issues, this will be reviewed by the building plan examiner. A minimum of one point five percent of swales are required and we will meet the criteria. If we do not meet the criteria, we will not be able to obtain a permit.
Hall has been forwarded to a voicemail service that has not been initialized.
I would like to bring it to the first drawing, which is the architectural side plan. So I wanted to assure to the neighbor that we are not making grade changes. The driveway entrance or the garage entrance is pretty much at the same level of the existing grades. So if, if, if somebody can bring up the first drawing, which is on the drawings package. Hello?
Hello, yes, could we bring that drawing up, please?
Not in this one, the plans package. Yes, not the one before, the very first one. So please zoom in at the front garage or driveway. So we have done the preliminary grading and if we were to see the existing grade are one fifty point two zero, our driveway is one fifty point nineteen. So it's pretty much the same. There is no difference in the grading. Whatever is there is there. So that will not cause any proposal for the retaining wall or grade change. So I can assure to our neighbor that there will not be adverse impact in terms of the grading. So I'm, I hope I'm able to answer his questions.
Mr. Ehrfan, the question that I think you might also want to answer is the one about the direct inlook to the living or the dining room. I think that would involve our looking at a side elevation.
I am, I have agreed to the gentleman that during the building permit stage, if we have to do a calculation according to the building code, minimum ten percent of the light is required for the living and the dining. And if our large window meets the criteria, we may not have the side window. But if it does not, I will be able to relocate the windows as suggested by the homeowner. We agree with this, their requirement or request.
Okay. Any questions, panel of the applicant? Mr. Nipfel, go ahead, followed by Mr. Byatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you explain variance number two to me? It doesn't look like you need it. And maybe I'm just not understanding it. The setback requirement at the side is point nine and it says here the front porch is point six one. Is that correct?
Yes, so here the bylaw reads, if I reduce the width of the porch, I can extend up to two point five meter, encroach two point five meter into the front yard setback. Because this porch is wider and it is aligned with the side yard wall, it kind of requires the variance. If, I think, I think there is a little bit of in the bylaw that they should also.
But excuse me, that's the thing I don't understand. The setback between the porch and the side yard is point six one, it says here. But on this drawing, it doesn't look like it's, it has a setback that's any less than the building itself.
I'm coming to exactly that, sir. So the bylaw says, the parent bylaw says that side yard setback should be point nine. That's where the examiner is coming from, that if this porch is point nine, there is no variance. But bylaw also allows in the subsection that if there is no wall on, excuse me, there's no window on that particular wall, a setback can be reduced up to point four nine. But the bylaw does not refer back to the porch. That porch will comply if it is point four or five. So that is why it's a kind of a technical reason why this variance is there.
Very technical, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Byatt, go ahead.
Just a couple of ones. One is to do with the, you've got a deck. I believe it might be on the main floor. But the deck at the rear does seem to be at a higher elevation. It's not at grade. It seems to be higher up. And there's no indication of any screening on either the, on your drawings. You've listed them as the left side elevation and the right side elevation. There's no screening on the appropriate one point five meter height. So that's the one question I have for you. The other one is looking at your drawings, like the site plan that I'm looking at in the screen right now. We know you're going to have a driveway to the integral garage. There's no indication of the materials you're going to use on the driveway. Do you tell us what you're going to be using?
We will propose permeable pavers.
Thank you. And about the screening on the.
We can certainly propose a one point five meter tall wood screen that will, you know, give privacy to homeowners as well as to the neighbors.
Good, thank you.
Very good. I don't see any further questions for the applicant. So let's take this application into committee for a motion. Mr. Nipfel, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe with the revisions that Mr. Zaid has suggested, this application is really quite acceptable and fits in reasonably well with the neighborhood and doesn't pose any negative impact. So with, having said that and having reviewed all the materials, I'd like to move approval of the application, subject to forestry condition number one, the provision of permeable pavers on the front driveway and one point five meter screening on the north and south edges of the rear, near rear deck. And I believe that's, yes, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chan, you're seconding? It is seconded by Ms. Chan. Moved and seconded to approve, those in favor, show of hands, please. Unanimous vote. The motion is carried, the application is approved. Number forty-three is three one three Caledonia Road. Here we have the minutes from the August twenty-fourth public hearing. We have submitted materials from the application. Email correspondence from transportation. And correspondence in support from three fifteen, three nineteen Caledonia. Two from three forty McRoberts Avenue. One from Frank Steena, no address. From three oh five Caledonia and three eleven Caledonia Road. All those in support. So Agent, please state your name and join us.
Hi there, I'm Jeremy Mulder. I'm the homeowner.
You're the homeowner, okay. Very good. So are you speaking instead of Jessica Rovito?
No, I'm. No, I'm hoping that my architect will be here to speak on behalf of us.
Okay, well, but you are the homeowner, so fine, okay, good. Let's just check with the panel, panel members. Presentation required here or?
Oh, my architect is here, he just is asking to be unmuted.
Very good, let's just backtrack a second then.
Hello?
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 Please state your name.
My name is Ben Gom from Project Studio Architects, 219 Dufferin Street, Toronto.
Are you speaking, we have Jessica Rovito listed as the agent, are you?
Hello, this is Jessica, my name has changed since then, it's Jessica Mulder. I'm here with my husband, but we're hoping that Ben is the agent in this case. Hi, Ben.
Hello.
So Jessica, you're asking Ben to speak for you, that's fine.
Yes.
Okay, very good, now we understand. Okay, so Ben, please give us your name once again, spelling your last name.
Ben G A U M.
Right.
From Project Studio Architects.
Thank you very much. Okay, good. And we're showing Jason Paulus online in support? No, okay, so there's no one standing by to speak. Okay then, panel members, we have the agent with us now. Mr. Clay, question?
Yeah, I frankly don't have any real issues with the main dwelling, but I wouldn't mind a quick overview of the ancillary building because it looks like it's seeking relief on height and it's two stories. So maybe we could get a quick overview of what the proposal is there.
Well, let's go for that. Go ahead, Mr. Gom.
Yeah, yeah, the proposed addition on the rear of the house actually has no variances whatsoever, so all the variances we're dealing with, all six are strictly pertaining to the auxiliary building. The auxiliary building actually isn't technically a two-story building, it's a one-story building. It's actually, basically it's replacing the existing garage that's there now. So there's a garage there in the exact place of the auxiliary building that is, you know, dilapidated and going to be torn down. So we are essentially replacing the garage with this, with the white section that you see on the site plan on the south of the lot. And on the second floor, we just have, we're taking the opportunity to give them a little bit more outdoor living space and we're creating a second story deck on the, you know, on the roof of the auxiliary building and above the open area just to the north of the auxiliary building. So it's not a two-story building. So we're allowed four meters, I think we're only asking for 4.57 meters in height. There might be some confusion because our original plan had a two-story auxiliary building that we subsequently, we delayed our original committee of adjustment hearing so that we could have discussions with the adjacent next door neighbor, right, connected to our semi-detached and the neighbors in the surrounding area. And then subsequently with those discussions, we've removed the second story as part of our design and we've gotten seven levers of support from all the adjacent properties. What you are seeing in the elevation, if you look at the side elevation, you'll see we put a six-foot privacy screen on the lane side to protect, you know, to protect the visual of the deck. And that's where, that's what's creating that, that two-story look perhaps, maybe is what's confusing you.
Well, the description that we have in front of us still, still refers to an office studio space on the second floor, so that would, I guess that we'll have to amend that. But the, so the stair access as well, so you have stairs up to the proposed rooftop deck?
We do, yes, if you, if you scroll through, if you scroll through the images of the... Again, I question if you're looking at an older zoning bylaw notice because the one that I'm seeing, it's six variances and none of them are describing a second story office, which is what we used to have in the original, in the original plan.
What we are looking at is...
It's under the purpose of the application, it's in the, what Larry's referring to is the paragraph under the purpose of the application.
In the public notice. The public notice is what the committee is dealing with and will be working from.
There's a carport on the ground level and an office studio space on the second level with a rooftop deck.
No, that's, this was all amended. We resubmitted in for zoning and got a brand new zoning notice, which we submitted in for committee of adjustments. So we don't have a, we don't have a second story, we don't have a carport anymore because one of our variances that is actually, variant six is removing any parking space requirements. So we don't have a parking pad anymore and we don't have a second story.
Let me interrupt you for a moment, please, then. In what timeframe did you submit all this revised material?
We submitted it right after, we submitted it right after we, we had to defer our original committee of adjustment hearing because we, even though we got all this information changed, it was literally one day late from presenting at the original committee of adjustment hearing. So then, literally the next day, we submitted all this stuff and got a new committee of adjustment hearing date, which is today.
Okay.
Can I just, can I bend here for a second?
Well, just before you do that, can we just, Sabrina, can you just confirm that the zoning notice is as the applicant has suggested?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm reviewing the zoning notice that was submitted to committee of adjustment on August the 16th. And the variances that are listed here are identical to what was part of the notice, the public hearing notice.
It's just the purpose that's incorrect, is that correct?
No, like all those variances that I'm reading on your, on your thing are wrong. We have a completely brand new zoning notice that was, that was given to us by zoning that we submitted in for committee of adjustment.
What is the date of the zoning review that was, that you have? That you submitted to us?
The date that I have for this, the zoning notice is, was dated Monday, August 15th, 2022.
Monday, hold on, sorry, Monday, August 15th?
August 15th.
Yes, and that's the one that you submitted on August the 16th with committee of adjustment.
Right, which is not the one that I'm looking at right here on your screen. So somehow the...
No, it is, it's exact.
I mean, I don't know how to, I'm looking at the zoning review notice right now on my screen and it's, and it's different.
So I'm going to ask Sarah to present the zoning review from, that was submitted on August the 16th to us. This is it on the screen.
Right?
Yep, dated Monday, August 15th.
Yeah, that's, that's the right one, that's the one that...
Well, you have to understand that what is taken from here is what's on the public hearing notice that was mailed out.
Okay, but what I'm telling you is what... Well then, what the panel is describing to me, look, if you look at this, read these, first of all, there's six variances here on the previous page you just had, there's five variances, six variances.
It's identical, sir.
Okay, I mean, so there's clearly confusion with the, with the, with the panel because our original committee of adjustment hearing had the parking pad, it had an office on the second floor. So the wrong set of plans was, was distributed.
Can I, can I bond in? I don't think it's as bad as, as that. I think what's before, I'm sorry, is Benjamin, is that your name? What's before the variances, can you scroll up a little bit on the screen there? Larry's comment about this being a two-story structure is because of the statement that's under the descrip, not in there, in the, in the purpose of the application, that's wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, the variances, Sabrina has said the variances are right, that's exactly what, the only thing that's, that appears to be bad, and it's not all that bad, is the description, which is no longer correct.
Right, yeah, okay, good.
Also, I think, I think we have the revised drawings, there's no office space.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's right. It's clearly the purpose for application which is, which is wrong.
Well, then, Jim has indicated the drawings that we have reflect what you've been talking about as your new proposal. It shows a storage building and a staircase with a, the staircase goes up to an extended roof of the storage building that works as a deck.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So let me get back to my, it sounds like we've got that clarified. So let me get back to my original question, the height variance that you're asking for, is it in respect of the staircase? Is that what's, is that's what's triggering the height variance?
No, I think the only thing that's triggering that height variance is the six-foot privacy screen that we have on all, on three sides of the, so we've got on the laneway side and the two adjacent property sides, we have a six-foot screen. For some reason zoning was considering that as part of our height consideration. I tried to convince him that, I didn't think that was because it's clearly just a privacy screen, but he didn't agree and I figured, okay, well then we'll just add that to our variance, it's 4.57 over a four, four meter allowance, so it's 0.57.
Right, and just, what's the nature of the privacy screen? Is it like wood solid or is it opaque or what is it?
No, it'll be, it'll be a wood, it'll be a wood privacy screen, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that.
No worries, I think we've got that all straightened out.
It's been a long day.
Okay.
My question is to the applicant, so does that, does that mean that it's not a two-story auxiliary building? It is one story with a rooftop?
Yes, yeah, it is a one-story building with a rooftop deck, yeah.
Let's go back then, so that we have something to vote on, let's go back to the purpose of the application and revise the wording so that it reflects the proposal. So right now it reads to alter the existing two-story.
Right, so it should read, also to construct a one-story ancillary building, storage space, no carport with a rooftop deck in the rear of it, yeah. Yeah, exactly, a one-story ancillary building, yeah.
A carport, so, so we changed two-story to one-story and then the part, and the carport on the ground level, does that, does that come out too?
Yeah, that comes out too, yeah.
Okay. All right then, I think we have the language of the purposes now corrected.
Yeah.
Madam Deputy Secretary, yes, it is, okay. So that panel is what we're voting on, or will be voting on, okay. Are there further questions for the applicant? If not, this application can go into committee for discussion and for a, moving toward a motion, let's do that now. And we're in committee now, anyone with comments or anyone ready with a motion?
Just a comment, perhaps you can start this off, Mr. Chair, was variance number five, you know, the notion of a platform located on the ancillary building, I noticed from the Google view that on the one side there appears to be a laneway, so you know, there's no immediate neighbor whose property could be overlooked. I'm not sure on the other side and this is one of those questions that I suppose a deck would not be allowed in this sort of circumstance, I'm not too sure about that, I don't know, my colleagues might be able to shed some light on that.
Carl, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm of two minds on this one, I don't understand what the objective is behind the variance or the bylaw that sought to be changed by variance number five. It's clearly, there's a prohibition about putting a deck on top of a one-story rear building and it seems to me that the deck with the screening has almost the same impact as a second story because the, the privacy screen is, is overpowering, if you will, as a secondary, second story building, although it's not as high. And looking at the use of the property, it seems to me that, that using the second story for outdoor space is reasonable, but I'm, I'm concerned with whatever the original authors of the bylaw intended by the bylaw prohibition on a rooftop deck and I, I don't know that, I wish I did, I wish we had a planning report on this.
I imagine it's safety, I'm just guessing, of course, but I would imagine it's a safety issue.
I'm, I'm thinking it's privacy.
I would think it would be noise and privacy, I think that's probably what it is because you're, you're elevated above your neighbor's backyards, basically.
Yeah, that's what I would think as well.
I can chip in, after all the working to make, make the application a bit more clear, I, I'm back into the same problem, I never think that a roof deck, a serious building roof deck is favorable to the neighbors and just because of the size too, you know, I'm not in favor of that.
And nor am I, because I see the difference between that and a deck on the back of the house is that here you are now situated on top of the ancillary building, looking back over the entire expanse of the neighbor's backyard and the backside of their house.
May, may I speak? This is the owner of the property?
No, I'm sorry, the panel is in committee now, you may not speak. In fact, you should be on mute right now. Panel is in committee, we are having a frank discussion here on the application internally and that's what we're doing. Other comments, panel with, I would personally like to see that, that number five variance refused. But, one of us needs to go ahead and try a motion, so is anyone ready for a motion? Mr. Byatt, go ahead.
Sure, I'll take a crack at it. I'd like to move a motion to, to approve the application with the exception of variance number five, refuse, refuse the request for a platform or a deck on the ancillary building.
I think you might want to consider number four as well.
Oh, that probably kind of goes together.
Okay, four and five, okay. Does that motion have a second? It does, Mr. Nipful is seconding.
Yes.
So it's moved, it is moved and seconded to approve, to approve variances number one, two and three and to refuse variances four and five. All those in favor, please?
Through you, Mr. Chair, it would be approval of variances one, two, three and six.
Pardon me.
And then it's as amended, right?
Pardon me.
And then refuse four and five.
Yes, yes, my mistake.
And would we need Sabrina to amend the purpose as well or is that moot?
Yes, approved as amended for variances one, two, three and six with the purpose amended.
Right. Thank you. Those in favor of that motion, show of hands. Those in favor of that motion, show of hands, please. That's unanimous vote to carry, or to, uh, to carry that motion and to so approve the application. Thank you, okay. That brings us to number forty-four. And number forty-four is the final application on today's agenda. It relates to seven-hundred-and-thirty-four Richmond Street West. The only materials before the panel on this application are a copy of the minutes from the October nineteenth public hearing and the submitted materials with the application. So we shall ask the agent to join us, please.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
We hear you fine.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
My name is Franco Spagnolo from Studio Spagnolo Inc., uh, nine-eleven Chippendee Drive, Mississauga. I am the owner, the representative.
Very good, thank you. Okay, panel members, on this application, we have the agent with us. Any questions for the agent? Agent, is there any, anything that we should, there's no request for a presentation here, but is there anything you'd like us to know about your application that we, you feel we should know?
Um, basically, I'll just do a very, very quick, uh, summary. It's, the purpose is to, for multiple projects, including the reconstruction of a two-story rear portion, uh, which is in really extremely poor structural condition, um, convert the, uh, existing attic into habitable space, a new third floor rear addition, uh, walkout garage and converting the dwelling from a single family to two units. Uh, we're seeking relief for bot, for five variances, um, variances number one and two deal with height.
No, 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 you don't need to do that, no, you've given us an idea, no.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see if the panel has any questions for it at this stage. Mr. Byatt, yes?
Thank you, Chen. It's not so much a, a question as a comment. I just wanted to, uh, uh, thank the agent for being proactively on the side elevations, uh, introducing, uh, appropriate privacy screens. Uh, it eliminates us having to ask for them. So it's, I'm glad that they've done that.
Okay, very good. All right then, let's take the application into panel for moving toward a motion. Ms. Chan, go for it.
Okay, I can go for the last one because I, this is a way to the, uh, central downtown area and, and houses are very, uh, compacted, um, built, um, very closely to each other. And then they also have the support of the next door neighbor, three, thirty-sixth, and we've put a privacy screen and I, I, I think it's a very good, uh, the enlargement and a good improvement of the existing building and I'm in support of it and, um, I don't think there are any conditions either.
Thank you.
Would you be okay with tying it to plans just to make sure we get the privacy screens locked down?
Plans, yes, maybe the elevations too. Both, both the plans and the elevations, uh, that, so we get the privacy screens, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
One of the things that we learned at a, at a training session this week was instead of just tying it to plans generally, is to state why, because, uh, the person inspecting later on needs to know why, what we were concerned with. So would you be open to saying, to provide privacy screening as shown on the plans? I agree that we should tie it to plans, but, you know, rather than having them pick away at the details somewhere else, it's the screens we're trying to confirm.
I think so, I think it's a good idea, yeah. More spe, more, more specific, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I'd be happy to second that.
It is seconded there by Mr. Nipfel. Moved and seconded to approve. All in favor, please, show of hands. That vote is unanimous. The motion is carried and the application is so approved. And with that, we do complete today's agenda. It is now seven sixteen PM and, um, my thanks to the panel for a very fine, uh, very fine day, a good hearing that looked after the things that had to be done. Ms. Chan, go ahead.
Thank you very much, everybody, again, from, uh, Mr. Chairman and the staff, thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina, and your team, as always.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Have a good evening.
We, we have two new members of staff here. Nicole is with us and Kirk is with us, both of whom were taking it all in today and, um, and so it's good to have them both with us.
I hope they both decide to, I hope they both decide to stay in their jobs after putting up with us all day.
They're both smiling, I think they will, Larry.
Good night, Nicole.
Good night, everyone.